I'd like to call to order the City of Griffin Board of Commissions Tuesday, July the 26th, 2011 workshop. Our first item on the workshop will be an update on water, wastewater master plans by Director of Public Works and Utilities Dr. Brant Keller. Good morning, Brant.
Good morning.
We're good, I hope you are.
Good morning. We, last year, just about a year ago, we started reviewing our master plan. Like the water, wastewater and stormwater. This morning, we're going to present the water and the wastewater. Pedro is going to go through about seventeen slides, I think seventeen to eighteen slides, just giving you some basic information. Obviously, you didn't have time this weekend to read those two documents, cover to cover. If you did, y'all had insomnia. But, the bottom line is, we're trying to give you a heads up of what we're looking at for projection and demand, and then when Pedro gets through, I'll close it up. But, he's going to get us started here and hopefully be pretty informative to y'all and give you an update. As you recall, in 2002, you know, we've loaded those bonds, and at the time, we said, you know, well, ten years is a long ways off, but guess what? Ten years is here now, so we're going to do a presentation for you, okay? Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Pedro.
Hello, Pedro.
Yes, we do.
Well, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Guess I'm going to...
I'm going to heat my coffee while you're talking.
All right. I'm going to get started with the water master plan. Like Brant said, sixteen slides or so. Can you hear me okay there?
Yeah.
And then, on the wastewater master plan, which is a little simpler, it'll be about six slides on there. So, we'll get started with the water master plan. We've done an update to the plan. Really, the first plan was done in 1997. There was another one in 1998, and that's the plan where the reservoir was selected for Steel Branch. Then, in 2005, I believe, there was an update, or 2007, I'm sorry. And, there's been several changes since 2007. Reduction in demand, didn't really know what the capacity of the Head Creek reservoir was, and some other issues, so we looked at doing another update to the plan, which will cover the period 2010 through 2050. The goals of the plan are, you know, we're going to look at all the demands, again, through 2050, then look at what, you know, identify alternatives to meet those demands, evaluate those alternatives, and then recommend one alternative. To project the demand, we looked at historical data, and keeping in mind, the three main players, main users are the City of Griffin, Spalding County, and Kawhi County. In Pike County, we have Williamson, Zebulon, and Concord. The City of Barnesville is also a user of the system, but mainly, most of the demand is Griffin, Spalding County, and Kawhi County. So, we looked at the historical for the last ten to twenty years, and developed one projection that way. Then, we looked at the projections made by the Office and Planning and Budget. They developed some projections, as Mr. Morrow knows, for the state water plant, and the regional water councils. So, those were important numbers to go by. In the end, the historical projections matched very well with the OPV projections, and so we decided to go along with those projections for the master plan for Griffin. After 2030, I mean, it's anyone's guess what's going to happen after that, but we were doing the plan through 2050, so we went ahead and used the OPV projections after 2030. Two things that are, you know, that come into play when we're talking about demand. One is the average demand for the whole year. And if you basically take how much water was pumped, divided by 365 days, that's your average demand. Where that's important, it's in your reservoir or storage capacity. When you're looking at drought, the droughts typically last about a hundred days, so you have to make sure you have enough storage in the reservoir to last that long. And that's where the average demand comes into play. Then, you have the peak demand during the winter, sorry, during the summer. You have days, maybe a day, maybe two days, maybe a week. Typically, there's only a few days in the summer where you have to meet certain peaks. And, you know, that's driven by irrigation, demand, et cetera. You can't really control that very well, and so, you've got to, you have to point for both the average demand and the peak demand. Peak demand is what determines how much capacity you have to have of the water treatment plants. Kind of a look at what the demand has been the last two years. The average for the year that just ended, FY 2010, was 8.9 million gallons per day, or MGD. Previous year was 8.3 MGD. So, the demand actually went up 600,000 gallons per day over the whole year. For the peak, FY 2010, the demand was 10.2 MGD. And last year, actually peaked at 13.1 MGD. So, we have, you know, you all have to meet the 13.1 with both the Steel Branch and the Simmons Water Plant. You can see how much that peak demand went up, and the June that just ended, 13.1 was a pretty high demand. Even though we've done projections through 2050, Brant's going to talk about the rate study that's coming up, and the planning that's coming up, that's going to cover really the next ten years. So, I figured, in the report, you'll see all the projections through 2050, but I figure we can kind of concentrate on the projections for the next ten years or so. Be glad to, I've got the table, if we need to talk about projections beyond 2020. For 2010, the average demand was about 8.4 MGD. Projected for 2015, about 11 MGD. 2020, about 14.1 MGD. The projected peak demand for those peak days in the summer is 12.7, basically, 2010, 16.5, 2015, 21.1 for 2020. So, what we have to do is compare, what's the demand going to be, and how much capacity do we have? And so, when do we need to do anything, either to the reservoirs or to the water plants? And, basically, on your rightmost column there, you see we've got, right now, a capacity available of 11 MGD. The demand for 2010, we were okay at 8.4 MGD. 2015, we'll be hitting, we'll be right at capacity. And 2020, we're beyond the capacity needed, so it means we need more capacity. Potentially, by 2016, we have to have more capacity. Then, on the peak demand, 2010, we have seventeen and a half now. By 2016 or so, also, we need additional treatment capacity. And that's, it's kind of a coincidence that it happened that way, that you have the need for both the stored water capacity and the treatment plant capacity. That's just the way the numbers worked out. By 2016, additional capacity would be needed. Most of the demands are going to be from Spalding County and from Kawhi County. The Griffin projected demand is basically not growing very fast. It's going to go from about, I think, two and a half MGD now, to about four and a half MGD by the year 2050. Whereas, Spalding County goes to about 11 MGD by the year 2050. And, as you know, Kawhi County goes up and then comes back down, but it peaks at, in terms of peak demand, it peaks about 11 and a half MGD. So, we looked at the options to increase the capacity to the water supply to the Simmons Water Plant. It's a little difficult, I mean, it's a little unusual situation. The problem we have is, we have a plant, the Simmons Plant, which is the older plant, has a lot of capacity, has 12 million gallons per day of capacity. But during the drought, from the Head Creek reservoir, when we have to curtail pumping the river, we basically only have five million gallons per day. Because if we keep pumping 12 MGD on every peak day, but we're in a drought, we're going to draw down that reservoir, we won't be able to use it anymore. If we can't use the Head Creek reservoir, then we cannot use the Simmons Plant. So, that's a key issue. That's really, I'm sure the question in your mind is, you know, we just spent $50 million on a project, you know, five, six years ago. How come we're having to do anything else right now? Well, I think this is what's driving it. We found out the capacity of the Head Creek reservoir, and this is back in a study we did in 2009, has been, basically, the reservoir's been silted in, and we only have about five MGD of capacity during a prolonged drought. So, when we know we're going to be getting into a drought, what Dr. Keller has to do, he has to curtail use of that reservoir and start pumping more water from the Steel Branch Plant. Now, Steel Branch Plant is now limited to about six and a half MGD. And I'll touch on, you know, it was supposed to be an eight million gallon per day plant. We're only being able to get six and a half million gallons per day, are we? And that's an issue, too. So, but, we need to look for a way to increase the capacity to the Simmons Plant, so we can make the most use of the Simmons Plant. So, we looked at, back actually in 2009, looked at the Head Creek reservoir, and what are the options? One of the options is to dredge the Head Creek reservoir. There's about, we lost about 500 million gallons of capacity since that reservoir was built in 1964, I believe it was. Originally, it was 971 million gallons capacity, we're down to 510 million gallons. Compare that to the Steel Branch reservoir, has three and a half billion gallons of capacity. So, Steel Branch reservoir is larger than Head Creek. We looked at, what happens if we raise the dam of the Head Creek reservoir, so we actually increase the water level in it, about 10 feet? That would give us more capacity also. The third option, we only looked at it after we saw what the costs were going to be for the first two. Dredging is a very intensive operation. I mean, the cost that we put in the plan, it's over $30 million, and we're not sure that that cost is even high enough. It's a very, it would take, it would probably take two years to dredge that reservoir. And, can you imagine the traffic of trucks, just taking, you know, taking the silt, de-watering out of the reservoir, and taking it to wherever it needs to be taken, for probably two years or longer? I mean, it would be, it would be a very expensive operation. And if you remember, when we were looking at the Steel Branch reservoir, you know, we talked about dredging Head Creek, and even at that time, it wasn't cost effective. So, the other alternative was, you know, raise the dam. Several places in Georgia have raised the dams of the reservoirs. Cost, I believe, is somewhere about 28 million dollars. And why is the cost so high? We would be inundating about 20 or 21 residences or structures. We would have to close Bon School Road. We would have to somehow raise the approachment to the bridge on Highway 92. We would have to make some other improvements to Chitum Road also, on top of the work that actually has to be done to raise the dam itself. And then, lots of environmental studies, probably lots of, you know, legal implications for relocating 2021 properties. And so, it was just not a very good option either. So, the other option we thought about was, we have three and a half billion gallons of storage at Steel Branch. We only have 500 million gallons at Head Creek. Why don't we build a pipeline from one to the other, and make all that volume from Steel Branch available up in Head Creek? It's a long pipeline, it's 25 miles of pipeline. But, the beauty of that would be, in the future, I'm thinking probably 30 years from now, that pipeline, where we've been using for, to pump raw water, could be used for drinking water. It's fairly easy to take a pipeline and clean it, and you can run what's called pigs through it, you can run all kinds of pigs, and really clean that pipeline very well, disinfect it, and now you can use it for drinking water. So, that expense of that pipeline now, in the future, it could be used for drinking water. Probably 90 to 95 percent of that pipeline could be used in the future. So, those are the options, and...
What's the cost on the pipeline?
Cost of the pipeline is close to 20 million dollars, 19.8 million. We had an estimate of 17 million, just really, two weeks ago. I went in and called, got some new quotes on Dr. Aaron Pike, because that would be Dr. Aaron Pike. And so, we had to update the cost of that option, because the cost of Dr. Aaron Pike has been going up. Now, where it's going to be on this pipeline, if it's ever built, don't know, but better to show you the numbers as they are today. So, you're basically looking at over 30 millions for dredging, close to 30 million to raise the dam, and then 20 million to put a pipeline that could be used in the future for drinking water.
I know we're talking about, you're talking about the cost, but, in your opinion, which option would be the best, you know?
Right.
Option, not cost wise, but the most, the one that affects it?
Right, right, exactly. Because we haven't really, I mean, we talked briefly about the untangible of the other two. We really did feel like the pumping the raw water from Steel Branch to Head Creek, building that pipeline, would be by far the best option.
Did you draw a schematic of how you would do it? In other words, you'll have to purchase right of way, and...
We did, and I'll show you, I've got a figure that I can show where that pipeline would be.
Okay.
And we even included cost arrangements. If we have any, you know, issues with being in the right of way, we included cost arrangements. And also, you know, the good thing about that also, when, if that road, that we put the pipeline, it ever gets widened, then if, say, DOT would come in, Georgia DOT, then they would have to reimburse the city for relocating the pipeline. So, we figured it'd be better to be outside on an easement. So, that's what, that will be our recommendation. But here's a summary of the cost of those options. You know, thirty, over 30, close to 30, and then 20. None of them are inexpensive, of course. It's all, when you're looking at regional water supply systems, everything is very expensive. Yeah, I've kind of highlighted some of the issues with some of the other ones, you know. Yeah, the cost of dredging does not include the wear on the roads for, I can't even remember how many thousands of trips it would take to dredge a reservoir. You know, the traffic of the trucks, dealing with that. And then, I touched on the racing of the dam, and the raw water pipeline being converted to drinking water in the future. So, our recommendation is to go with the raw water pipeline. Let me see if I can pull up here.
Have you looked at the option, if we expand the plant and run into the water line for supply, and just abandon Simmons?
I did, I did. We did, actually, you know, going back probably over 10 years ago, I think the game plan was to abandon Simmons in the future. And that's what I'm going to talk briefly about, options one and two. And so, you know, the game plan was, we'll abandon Simmons, we'll start pumping, we'll expand Steel Branch, we'll pump all the water from Steel Branch. Let me get to that in one minute, Holberg. Because, it just seems like, well, there's one huge advantage to keeping Simmons in operation, too. Now, you have two plants where you have redundancy. We only had one plant, Steel Branch. Anything happened to that plant, you have wholesale customers that are very important to the city, you have, you know, your industrial customers and your retail customers. It would be, you know, catastrophic to lose that plant. So, talked with Dr. Keller, and you know, he, being in the position, having to operate a system like this, he would rather have two plants than one. Now, the city only has had one plant since 1929, so it's not like, it's not doable, but there's definitely an advantage to having the two plants. I'll have to pull up the figure 4.3 in one minute, if I don't really have it here. Let's see, let me just pull up the master plan. And this is a desktop analysis of where the route would be. I'll get there in one second. Okay, it's the line in orange. And you can see, I don't know if you can follow the cursor that I'm using on the computer, but you see this jog right here? This is worst case. Ideally, we'd be able to sort of cross, you know, go across country here, but this alignment is following the roads. And it goes from Steel Branch down in the south to the Head Creek reservoir, you know, where it is. And it's about 25 miles, and it'd be a 30-inch diameter pipeline.
So, currently have a 30-inch water main right now?
We have it. That line starts at 36-inch, now the plant, and it goes into 30, and then it goes into 24-inch as it gets closer to Griffin. And that's this line here, you can actually, that's this line, this is the route right now. It goes 36 to that point, and 30, and then 24 to Griffin. So, the options were, option one, we expand Steel Branch Water Plant, we don't do anything at Simmons or Head Creek, and we build new transmission mains from Steel Branch. I have the figures on that, if you're interested in seeing them, I can pull them up. Then, option two, still expand Steel Branch, but increase the capacity of the Head Creek reservoir, so that we can utilize at full capacity the Simmons Plant. You know, and that's the key issue. We got 12 MGD capacity at Simmons, that's for peak days, but we only have five MGD during a drought that we can rely on.
What's the timeframe, if you decide to build that pipeline? What, how long?
It would be needed by 2016 also.
No, I know that, but how long would it take, start to finish, you estimate, if you decide to go ahead? Is it one year, two year, five year?
I would say two years.
Two years.
Probably between one and two years, I would think.
Okay.
But, you know, to be safe, two years. Most of it is sort of cross-country, so, I mean, it's a rural road, so, not very congested, which is definitely an advantage.
We built it just in five hours, and no way to figure it out. We have to be all day, and four to five.
Yeah.
It's probably, if we actually built that line, or if we put pre-crew, we started at the end, both ends, and then...
That includes the time to acquire easements and all the environmental and legal. I'm looking at...
We were still dealing with some of the right of way, if you use it once you start construction, but, yeah, if they don't end up, it's a problem for you. A year more than likely would drive it to this.
So, even if we looked at two years, is a very conservative estimate at most. Couple of years lead time. Okay. One year maybe. In regards to customer base, hypothetical, if we lose Spalding County Water Authority as a customer in 2021, have you figured what direction? Or do we need to have a long-term contract with them before we proceed?
Yeah, excellent question. You know, I, that needs to be, something needs to be discussed on that, and something needs to happen way before 2020.
Well, I have an answer. We're going to be coming to you next Tuesday to employ Raph Taylor's services. We're doing a rate analysis, or rate analysis and a PUI model, that we need to do all those factors, and any odds and prices, and whatnot, we're going to come on board, and all we do that, and then we'll...
I thought the contract was until 2025?
Twenty-five.
With Spalding?
No, it's probably...
So, they signed it in 95?
Yes.
Okay.
And, will there also be discussion regards to the option of a regional water authority?
We'll have several models, all these representatives.
My, I think, if Spalding County is not a customer of the City of Griffin, this work needs to be postponed. There's no need to do it by 2016. So, really, what that points to, there's need to be some discussions with Spalding County before 2014, 2012.
But this additional debt's going to cause a significant increase?
Not sure yet, Mr. Holberg. I really have not gotten into the rates, since there'll be a rate study that will be done by Raph Taylor's. I mean, this is the perfect sequence to do the work. We come up with a master plan for both the water and wastewater systems, and you know how much money you're going to need for capital improvements. And then, a company like Raph Taylor's, who specialize in rate studies, now they have all the numbers to work with. So, the key thing to the master plans is, let's all agree on what's needed to be done. You know, let's raise any questions, any doubts, and then give Raph Taylor's the best plan that you think will work, so they got good numbers to work, and they don't have to be going back and forth, what if we do this, what if we do that? But, as things stand today, with Spalding County, Kawhi County being customers of the system, something really needs to happen by 2016. The projections we've done on demand are not very conservative, they're not very high, we don't feel like. So, we feel like something needs to be done. There's a table 401 in your report, but this is a summary of it. Option one would be the one, basically, just pumping most of the water from Steel Branch. It'll be, the work will be done in two phases. The first phase will be needed by 2016. You can see 43 million dollars versus 22 million dollars for options one and two. And option two includes expanding the Steel Branch Plant to 12 MGD, and building that new raw water main to the Head Creek reservoir. Overall, when all the phases are done, 70 million versus 47 million, so it's a huge difference. And that was the reason for deciding, let's do something with the Head Creek reservoir, rather than try to bring everything from the Steel Branch Plant.
What's going to keep Head Creek from continually, if you were to do this, deteriorating?
Yeah, excellent question, again. And Dr. Keller and I have talked about this many times. We've put in there, in the implementation schedule, a number of $500,000 per year to keep doing some dredging. You know, the silt's still going to be coming in.
Yeah.
And, you know, we lost half the volume, I guess, since 197...
Is this 73 or something? I can't remember.
54. You know, we're going to keep losing it, and if we're going to be pumping water into it from Steel Branch, we need to at least maintain the volume we have now. So, we put a number in there, that's really a budget number more than anything else, of half a million dollars to dredge. And dredge is very expensive. We've seen some dredging going on in Gob County recently, $4 million just to dredge. 78 million cubic yards or something. It was just a very, very high number. It's very expensive.
The goal is bringing back the money in on about 240 million gallons. After that, we did a commitment, so, looking at a half million dollars, originally, about 10, 10 years to get back to that potential amount.
What happened? What happened? When they, we originally started with the other reservoir, did we just stop doing anything?
We never did anything. It started with the offices, it was my other office, it was a little bit of all, or, one was to help us dredge that facility, and it was too expensive to keep rebuilding the construction, and that's what it's there. Basically, now, we did that with our system, and expanded the water source, and looking at, looking at the story, we've got a certain level, so, the level of maintenance on the reservoir for about 10 years, and 500,000 dollars, and we're ready to get that problem back to work.
I like the idea of having two plants for redundancy in today's world, and mischief out there. And as you said, if you stop pumping raw water and you clean it and use it for processed water, then you can tie into our system all along the way and use it to deliver.
Correct.
Correct, drink your money.
Correct.
Yeah.
And with a year or most two-year lead time, we have time to sort out this latest aberration with Spalding County, and before we have to make a decision on this.
Correct.
So, when are we looking at making a decision? Only after the rate study?
Yes, because what rate study is, I'm going to go into the detail. It gives you all the options. Let's say, there's, you want to change debt, whether you change the debt, and it spreads across our, so, if approved, if you want to change to our rate, change the rate, it spreads across, so, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't all. It's going to be a great tool for, you know, any type of, you know, i.e., you know, that's how it is, you know, all, changing the better, changing the better. better, you change your, uh, that profit, if you're, if you're in the process of moving the bonds and it will kind of affect what's, what's, uh, when you get them updated, uh, this, uh, this, uh, this, uh.
How will this affect our bonds?
Do you agree with me, the rate?
Yeah.
Um, that, to be determined, I was gonna say either a lot of security, I think all the assets, uh, even if it's pretty soon, if it went to, uh, bottom of the, uh, some of these, uh, uh, here, three, yeah, it's gonna be brought out, uh, and this is very rough, so.
Don't, don't faint, huh?
Yeah, 1.6, 1.7, $5 million.
Your, your existing bonds would have priority, of course.
Yeah.
To be paid, now, any subsequent bonds would have to be issued in what's called parity to those bonds, which would probably also warrant you refunding those existing bonds. I don't know right now.
We, we've done that with the, with Steel Branch, yeah.
What the market's gonna, gonna do, we gonna meet with somebody tomorrow to talk about some of our general, you know, debt situation, but, um, the municipal bond market is kinda on edge right now like everybody else is, to some of these debt problems are addressed by Congress.
Right. Okay.
My frustration is that we're looking at over 2035, 2040, the City of Griffin actually only needs about 4 million gallons of water a day, and we're here trying to figure out how to get it that 20 million gallon a day range, and we're taking it all on our responsibility, hoping everyone's gonna keep doing what they say, but all it takes is Coweta County to figure out how to wiggle out, Spalding County to figure out how to wiggle out for a better deal, yet, we've got the same population base, we've got basically the same industrial base.
Yeah.
And our customer, our customers can't stand another 20% rate increase for water, another 20% rate increase for sewer.
Mm-hmm.
At the same time, we're staying steady, so, this is gonna be, this isn't gonna be an easy decision for this board to keep, it seems like the planners and engineers from 10, 15 years ago, whether it's the capacity of the current plant's production at Steel Branch versus long-range plan of how we're gonna get the extra water here at a reasonable cost, someone's dropped the ball and we're stuck here now trying to figure out how to pick up the pieces right now.
Well, I think the economy is the villain here. I, I feel sure everybody's been hit by this and, and nothing is cheap today. Uh, I wasn't part of the planning for this, I, in reading the history, it goes back to the 90s, so, uh, 20 years ago, commissioners made decisions, almost 20 years ago. I don't personally think it was the worst decision or the bad decision, I think that we hopefully are gonna grow, uh, we do have something and, that would, most of us would prefer to have other partners in it, but the partners have gotta bring forth some money in order to buy into it, and, uh, so I'll wait for the rate, rate study to condemn and to complain, but I think that, I appreciate you bringing it to us this early so that we've got something to study.
Also, 10 dollars, but when you do the rate study, then, call and ask what's being out, or, you know, what's going on, there'll be these presentations, one thing there are number two, it looks pretty, I guess, insightful to do this, but you, you remember, we walk up to 35% of our revenue, part of it is the economy, but major part, when we say economy, we walk up to our top stuff.
That's right.
I mean, we, so, we went from around 11 million gallons a day, back down to eight, now you're starting to start farming back up, even though the economy, well, we, we statistically, since over, since our plan back up, we're, we're still 2 million gallons a day behind where we were, even with how we just ran on, and it's a lot, springs, 2% damage, NACOM, now, lose, uh, 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 I mean, Riverside, I mean, you, you mean?
And they didn't leave because of the water rate?
Uh, yeah.
Right, so.
I think you also have to take into consideration the legal environment has changed since decisions were made to build Steel Branch and that treatment plant, I mean, you know, we look at water today in a whole different light and there's a lot more, um, conservation that, you know.
It's true.
We sell bonds based on increasing future usage over the period of the bond issue and, and not on the fact that, uh, you somewhat have the rug cut out from under you.
Exactly.
I, I think it's been sort of touched on here, but if you look at this purely from the business case, the City of Griffin was encouraged to do this by Coweta and Spalding, who signed long-term contracts because they wanted water supply guaranteed, so the City of Griffin shouldered considerable financial risk based on those contracts and, uh, their request for water. Now that we're deep into this, these contracts are continuing under attack and our two biggest customers say, well, we really don't want all this water, we don't like the price, we this, we that, we the other, and are trying to wiggle and swerve out of it and leave us holding this financial bag. And I'm not attacking either one of them, but it seems to be, um, a change of heart. So now, if the City of Griffin is faced with another 22 to 46 million dollars to increase capacity with partners who are always looking for an excuse to get out, uh, we're shouldering the risk in the hope contracts hold up, which is not a very comfortable position, so, my personal opinion is, if these contractual partners really want to guarantee water, we do need to continue with this, looking at a regional authority and let them bring money to the table so we don't have to float those bonds and shoulder that responsibility and hope, they need to bring cash to the table, buy in and do this on a, hopefully a cash basis, not a bonding basis, not increase their debt, not carry the risk and make them partner. So, I don't like being the at-risk partner and hope that the contracts remain good and your partners remain faithful, I'd much prefer they become capital partners with their skin in the game.
It would've been nice if that, uh, opinion was taken 10 years ago or eight years ago or whatever, because we did try to get people to come in and be original and no one had the equity, they didn't wanna put forth any equity, they wanted to be partners immediately without any input into it. And I think I have preached that long and hard, that if you wanna become a partner, you've gotta put something forth in order to be a partner. So, but we appreciate this, anything else, Pedro, that you would like to talk about?
Um, I can go through the, the slides pretty quickly, so a few left.
Okay, that would be nice, uh, but since we don't have to make a decision today, but we appreciate you bringing this to us.
Okay, sure, just go through the last few ones and, uh, so basically, option two is the preferred option, and then the additional capacity is needed by 2016, barring anything happening with Spalding County not being, uh, you know, a participant. So the next steps will be, we need to evaluate the Steel Branch Water Plant, uh, there's some issues that we need to work, we've been working with them, but there are, there are some issues that have been very difficult, and I think in the budget for FY 2012 or 2013, 2012, I guess, uh, there's some money to go ahead and do a good evaluation before any recommendations are made as to how to get to 12 MGD at that plant. And then, um, I guess in the next, probably next year, begin a, a route study of the, uh, water main.
Can water lines handle 12 million, can, can the current supply lines handle 12 million gallons a day back to our system and to other, other systems?
They can handle about 10 million gallons per day, the rest, the rest of it goes to Coweta County from, from Steel Branch.
But coming this way to Griffin, it'll hold up to 10 million gallons a day?
Yes.
With our capacity and storage?
Yes. So that's the end of the, uh, water plan, uh, the wastewater plant will be a lot shorter than this one. You know, uh, I think there was a, a master plan done in 1995, I believe, and then there's another done in 2000, another done in 2005, things haven't really changed very much among those.
No.
I remember back in 2000, the presentation with Bill Jordan and Ron Harris was with us too, and, uh, we're talking about $100 million had to be spent on the sewer system back then. Well, you know, that hasn't happened, that hasn't had to happen, so, uh, I think the key thing on the wastewater master plan, basically, we did the same thing, we projected the flows, you know, you have the Potato Creek Plant, the Cabin Creek Plant, and the Shale Creek Plant, and then recommended alternatives for each one of them. Um, I don't know if you, just real briefly here, um, you know, the Potato, Potato Creek Plant is down here near Lamar County, uh, Shale Creek is up to the west, and then Cabin Creek is to the north of the city, and you can see the service areas for each one of those, Cabin Creek is by far the largest, the smallest, uh, service area. Shale Creek, the capacity of it is 2 and 1/4 million gallons per day, current flow is 1 and 3/4. The flow has actually decreased since the plant was in 2005, from 1.9 to 1.7, the projected 2030 flow is somewhere between 3.1 and 3.7, depending on, on what method is used to project the, uh, the capacity, or the demand, sorry, the, the projected flows. Um, our recommendation is, let's wait on Shale Creek, who knows if those flows are gonna happen the way we think they're gonna happen, we've used, you know, just real quickly here, we've used two methods, um, we are, you got years and then, uh, capacity, one method says that we should've been at capacity by now, the other method says, it says 2016 will be at capacity, very difficult to predict those things, our recommendation is, we just wait and see what's, what's gonna happen, to see how growth happens, and growth happens.
And again, the lead time, once you decide to expand it, is how much?
Well, on that one, the plant, actually, the expansion has already been designed.
Right.
So the plants are on the shelf, they have not been submitted to the Georgia EPD for approval, but they're on the shelf, so we know what has to be done. So it'll be a matter of getting the plants approved by EPD and putting in project, God forbid, I think we are saying somewhere between 18 months and 24 months.
Okay.
Essentially two years for construction.
Cost from 10 million to eight, plus or minus 15, 12?
Yeah, it is, about 10 million, I believe it is, it's somewhere in here. Potato Creek is the one that, because of the new industrial park, that's the one we've been talking about, the plant needs to be expanded. Uh, capacity is 2 million gallons, we're at 1.4, again, on that one, the flow has actually decreased from 1.8, projected flow is anywhere from 2.8 to 3.7, and we have two, so we need to expand the plant. And, uh, here, you know, 2014 is where, uh, we, we think that, when that, we think that needs to happen. Uh, cost of that one, I believe, is like 12.4 million dollars.
All right, let's stop right there and talk about that.
Okay.
Because this is my heartburner, if you will, with the Spalding County situation. We're expected to spend 12.4 million dollars to upgrade the Potato Creek Water Treatment Plant to handle the new industrial park. The Industrial Authority is giving the city $5 million from the SPOS as an offset, an inducement to increase the plant. So the City of Griffin then has 7.4 million dollars of their own money in the game to increase the capacity primarily to support the industrial park. Now, Spalding County wants to basically go look for water suppliers, yet they expect us to furnish the sewer treatment and, with our own money primarily, and yet not potentially have the water business, so in my personal opinion is, there's no, no justification for putting 7.4 million dollars of our money in to provide sewer service if we're not guaranteed the water business as an offset, and so I think this needs to be agreed to before we go out on another financial limb to help the Industrial Authority. That's my political stand on that.
Yeah. I believe that's a good point, though.
There's a quid pro quo here in London.
Yeah, there is. Mm-hmm. Okay, so, and then.
10 to 12 million dollars on that plant?
About 12.
For one, for 1 million capacity?
Yeah, 12 and a half, 12.4 million, yeah. Cabin Creek, uh, because it's small, the small drainage bay area to it, does not have to be expanded, uh, I know Brian's gonna talk about this, but we have some concerns about the Georgia EPD making the city abandon that plant, and so, what we've looked at in the future is taking the flow from Cabin Creek and transferring to the Shale Creek Plant, and, and then closing Cabin Creek.
And what would that cost?
Um, the pipeline, I believe, is about, uh, somewhere between 1 and 1/2 and 2 million dollars, and, uh, we have to put a pump station there to be able to pump into Shale Creek. What happens is, the, the interceptor line that goes to the Shale Creek Plant would not have enough capacity and it's a long sewer line, so that would have to be paralleled, and I thi, I believe it's about 5 million dollars there. Now, in the plan, that needs to be done anyway, so, um, you know, we just make it probably a little larger to take the flow from the Cabin Creek.
Would that increase, uh, customer supply in the county?
Uh, not really, because we're limited to a, to a certain service area, since now Spalding County, they have two plants now, they have Highland Mills Plant and the old Spring Industries Plant.
Right.
So now they got into the sewer business, so our area has actually been reduced somewhat, uh, so it'll be in the same service area that I showed before, growth within that area, and actually goes out quite a bit into Spalding County West towards Shale Creek.
And that's what I was thinking about, because there are some businesses out that way that, you know, desire to have sewer.
What's the capacity of the, um, the Springs Plant?
It's in here somewhere.
You know, they don't really have a flow, um, they don't, in their permit, they don't have a flow limit, which is typical of industrial plants.
Before it was an industrial plant, it was not, it was, uh, it was, uh, it was like 3 and 1/2, uh, uh, uh.
Yeah.
You have to modify it, because it's large, uh, uh.
Are we looking at that possible option of partnering with Spalding County to, instead of putting it into Shale Creek, going to, since that plant is just upstream from there, where they would, give them their capacity they need to?
Uh, I, I was gonna address that later, but I'll break it down, there's a potential that if we have to eat this, that plant, we turn, we turn, go back to the, uh, 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 that plant is part of the, uh, uh.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, there's a, uh, a gain here because that 1 million to up to 3 million projected would certainly benefit coming back into the, uh, the Flint River Basin, that would be politically, uh, popular.
Well, they probably, you know, there's, there's more flows, you have a flow gap, so.
Yeah, I understand that, so it's an inflow of the upper flint, stuff an outflow, which would certainly help our situation in the Flint River, but the 5 million bucks to get it back, uh, also means that you could stop operating that plant in the annual budget cost, so, to me, there's a possible winning combination here in closing that one, putting it back in Shale Creek, the Flint River.
Yeah, absolutely. So really, to summarize the recommendations, you know, expand Potato Creek, I think there's an issue there that needs to be talked about with, uh, Spalding County.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, provides 500,000 gallons per day capacity to the new industrial park. The, uh, contract documents have been approved by EPD, so it's really to proceed to bid, go to bid as soon as, uh, you're ready, um, and that's the estimate it costs, is 12.4 million. There's a, you know, in the plan, there's a slew of things that are, have been there since probably 95 or 2000, they're still in there, you know, again, our idea would be just pushing back as far as you can until we know that's gonna happen. You see the, the flows are increasing faster than we projected, or at the same rate, then something may need to happen be, before 2016, but.
Question on that one, um, that's a land application system, which is a no-no now, so the expansion will be, you know, treatment plant and a point source discharge, does that also retrofit the land applications or leaving it in?
We, we actually leave in the land application system in service.
Just the expansion goes?
So the expansion only goes to Shale Creek.
Okay.
That's right.
And then, when we talked about Cabin Creek, um, I'll say, that could be postponed, you know, beyond 2020. So, this is the things we talked about in terms of the collector lines and sewer lines and all that, uh, I believe those things need to be pushed out as, as long as we can. And, um, are you gonna bring the, you talk about the CIP of wastewater, or?
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pedro, it's always good to see you.
Good to see you too.
I'm gonna be short and brief, just wanna point out a couple, uh, things to y'all. Um, we have planned the timeline, basically, what I wanna bring to you is a couple things. Uh, Pedro, didn't touch on one thing, uh, uh, the Flint River pumps are gonna need to be replaced, they've been in business since 1929. They've been in business since 1929. But the good thing about that is, is we're going to control those through SCADA and we will lose four people in the process because it's all manually driven. So we'll bring it up to the state of the art and be able to control those pumps from Harry Simmons. But that comes at a price too. And that's roughly right at 2 million dollars. And it's in the plan and I'll show it to you in a minute. Couple of things that you have to be sensitive to, and Drew touched on them a while ago. We're an environmentally regulated world. Right now, EPA seems to be able to push any buttons they want to push at any given year in writing new regulations. A couple of things that we, and this is why we're looking at the money so closely. Are we going to sell additional water? Are we, you know, what a regional plan is going to look like? Because there's potential out there that we'll have to treat for, they call emerging contaminants. And it's pharmaceuticals and personal care that's being flushed back into the system. Those systems aren't cheap. We'll go to, you know, either we'll go, there's several ways to treat them, but any way you treat them is about a 5 million dollar shot in addition to the plants in order to treat for it. This is in the future, but you can just about feel that coming. And these are some of the things that we keep in our back of our mind. 5 million is 5 million. It's a lot of money. And that won't be an issue. Will we do it and when we do it? They'll tell us when and then we have to come up with the money to do that treatment process. Another unknown in the future is the state water plan and this thing called non-revenue water. And that is how much are you replacing water lines? And y'all know that's a pretty expensive proposition. So that's another unknown. Another unknown on the wastewater side is sludge management. And that is currently we have farms and we have subcontracted out sludge management to a company called Synergy Row and they drop the sludge and they permit the fields and what have you. One of the challenges that we're starting to see is that younger folks no longer want to be farmers. They get the land when their parents pass away and guess what? 300 or 400 acres, nain in the business. They don't want to pay taxes on it. They sell the land, they sell the land. We lose that process. There's some options out there. There's geo tubes, there's pressing, what we call belt pressing. And obviously, none of those are cheap. The geo tube would be the best way, but I'm just bringing those type of things to your mind now because I don't want you to say, well, you know, nobody ever mentioned these things before. Those are some of the options. TMDLs, I know you've heard me say this and you say, I'm getting tired of hearing about TMDLs. TMDLs are going to be, will affect our permits in 2000 and 2014, our permits roll differently. But if our permits and the way things are going are going to be readdressed each in their cyclic turn, it looks like we'll be addressing ammonia and we'll be addressing additional VOD and a couple of other issues. And that means we're going to have to upgrade the plants. The good thing is, is we've already done that with what Pedro and I did and John years ago, we said, okay, let's make it almost zero detectable discharge. So when we do Potato Creek, we won't have any problems with our permit. And if we have a problem at Shoal Creek, we upgrade Shoal Creek, all right? We have put into place the mechanical devices in order to meet those permits. So we won't be doing something in retrospect. The one thing that is a little contentious, and we brought this up before, is the Cabin Creek. And we will start feeling some information on that over the next couple of years. Anytime you get involved in this, you work with EPD and they'll give you, you usually work out a scenario, I don't know, five, six, seven, 10 years, but you work your way out of it. You just don't flip a switch and say it's over.
Is Cabin Creek an older technology?
Cabin Creek's an older technology. There's no physical room for expansion there. But Cabin Creek is the most efficient treatment plant that we have in our system. It's the simplest. Same thing with Harry Simmons. Sometimes the latest technology always isn't the best. It does get better as time goes by, but as far as simple treatment, the system we have there is very efficient and it's cheap. So there's some things we're looking at the future. Obviously, we've got to replace the river pumps. There'll be some personnel loss at that particular point in time. Cabin Creek is decommissioned, obviously, there'll be some overhead reduced there. And when I say overhead, that's chemicals and everything, you know, depending on the treatment process at Shoal Creek. Didn't want to get too involved in anything, but do want to, and y'all have this in your book, but you can see that it took rather a long time to get to this and we hope that we've given you the information. Please be patient. We will be doing, coming to you at the next commission meeting to go ahead and enter into a professional services agreement with the Raptalis Company. They will provide a computer model that you can come in my office or Kenny's or, you know, whoever you, because you've got to use this thing on a regular basis and say, let's say you want to add a customer. And we know what the wholesale rate is, we put it in, it spreads it across the board. It's a phenomenal tool. Y'all are going to really appreciate it. And it will give you the questions, Mr. Holberg, that you're asking, what if this is gone? You take out that rate, you take, or put in a new rate, you take out that unit volume and it spreads it completely across the board. And this is something that we've been looking for the last five years. And the only reason we're able to do it now is because of Coggedale. And I know because it gives us the information we need to populate the model. Outside of that, if you don't have any questions, we'll be quiet and sit down.
Have we had any issues with the drop in the gallons per day in sewage? Have we had any problems with the plants puking in the last couple?
No, it's a little bit of a challenge because one of the things, believe it or not, when you don't, we have unfortunately significant I and I in Potato Creek. That actually helps blend the material. It's when we don't have the rain, the drop in the volume in there, we've got to play with the bugs and, you know, they're constantly. The other challenge we had is at Cabin Creek, if you go back historically and look at our flows, and I can show you a spreadsheet with the ups and downs by months for years, but what happens at Cabin Creek is, is we start getting flies because we don't get enough moisture in there and it starts growing algae on a trickling filter. So it's a game, but we have excellent operators in our system, put them up against any in the state and they're able to manage the system. Our biggest challenge is demand management right now on volume. And that is Head's Creek's too small in order to sustain another drought at the way we're doing it. So we switch our workload down to still branch and make it work. And we appreciate your support.
Right. Well, I guess the bottom line is blank happens and it's expensive.
Yes, ma'am. And it's not getting any cheaper. And we'll have some models in this model. We populate historically how much chemicals cost, how much electricity costs, how much labor and burden costs, and you'll be able to see everything right there in front of your face.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Would you all like a break before we go into our next discussion? All right, this time we will discuss online bill pay. Assistant Director of Electric, Tom Ridgeway will address. I'm going to take a break in a minute.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is something we've looked at previously. We're bringing it back to you. We feel it's time to move on with this project. What we would like to do is outsource our bill printing and mailing services and also finally be able to bring our customers online bill payment processes. We submitted an RFP. We had over 10 companies respond to it. We narrowed it down to two local vendors who could provide both services in-house. Visited both vendors and-
Both local, you said?
Excuse me?
Both local.
Both local, both in Atlanta. And we visited, Laura and I went and visited both companies and based on what we saw in the pricing, we're presenting the agreement with Datamatics to you today. We have with us Scott Stevens, Tom Womble and Gabby Peck with Datamatics to answer any questions you may have. But right now, if you look at the financial impact section, it's costing us about 12.11 cents to produce a one-page black and white utility statement. Using Datamatics services, that same statement produced in color will reduce to 10.95 cents per statement. So it's going to save us roughly $3,500 a year for mailing out utility statements. And then also about $2,800 on the delinquency notices that we're sending out. Again, we send out between 6,000 and 7,000 delinquent notices a month. So using their services will reduce those costs. Other problems, challenges we've had especially lately are, is the reliability of our folding machine. The folding machine has gone down repeatedly recently and we've had to fold and stuff utility statements by hand, which becomes when you're sending out anywhere from 2,000 to 6,000 utility statements in a cycle, that becomes very labor intensive and delays customers getting, good delay, customers getting their bills. Luckily, we haven't had problems with getting the bills out, but it's slowed down other operations that we could be having. This function will also be able to enable us to take web payments online. We will not have the responsibility of maintaining credit card information, which will reduce our liability and red flag compliance and things. All that will be handled by Datamatics.
Question?
Yes.
For two. When Jack Pollan briefed us, whenever, I think it was Jack, said that the, when we were pressing for online payment, the real issue was not being able to handle it. The tough issue was security and managing people's accounts and things. So what you're telling me is we dodge all of that problem by having Datamax and they're responsible for online security, for credit card numbers and all that kind of things that, and nobody can hack in and steal and so on. They're covering us on that liability.
Yes, sir. And they're dealing in such a way that they're actually not storing that customer's credit card number. Their customer's going to have to present that number and we'll let them address those issues. They've got a brief presentation here-
Okay.
About the various services that they're going to provide.
One other question though, that came to me when I read through all this. We use utility statements frequently for stuffers with information.
They will also be able to handle the stuffers. And right now, we can only, we can only stuff one item in a utility statement. They can stuff multiple items.
So we give them the master and they're going to reproduce it like they do the statement and stuff?
No, we will give them the printed copies just like we're doing now.
Okay.
And they'll stuff them. But we can, they can do multiple inserts as opposed to right now, we can only do one insert.
Now, who are we talking about? Excuse me, I'm sorry, I was in there.
The online, the bill printing and mailing services and the web payment services.
Right. How many, how many people do you anticipate that will take advantage of this?
On the web, I really don't know. We were quite surprised about how many people are paying by credit card now. I don't know, do we have a, do we have an actual account, Laura? Yeah, we haven't done an actual account.
So you don't really know how many people mail their statements in? I mean, their checks in?
Probably about 60% of our customers pay in person right now.
They do?
Yes, we have a tremendous walk-in business.
Well, I get asked all the time by folks, would they be able to pay their bills online, online, online?
Yeah. We're hoping for about a six-week implementation project, process on this project. We've got to get the online web presentment activated through Coggedale and then the bill printing, reformatting the bills and things. And then getting the online mailing process going. And then at that time, once they're actually printing the bills and mailing the bills for us, then we will activate the online payment so that everything is uniform.
And who's going to be doing this for us now?
Datamatics.
And where are they located?
They're in Atlanta.
They're located right here in the back of the room.
Yeah.
Well, I know that they were back there, but they weren't, were, did you introduce them, Tom? I knew who they were.
Yes, we have Scott Stevens back there, Gabby Peck, and Tom Womble has a brief presentation here.
Okay, very good.
Before you leave the mic, is this going to be an increase to the customers?
No. This is actually going to reduce our operating cost just a little bit. So there's no increase to the cost, cost to the customer.
Great. Put the presentation up, please.
Good morning.
Tom Womble with Datamatics and the Director of Information Systems there. And I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to work with you and help you more efficiently get your bills out and give you a little background on Datamatics. We're a 35-year-old company. We're headquartered in Atlanta. We have a facility, disaster recovery and redundant facilities out of Richmond, Virginia and Phoenix, Arizona. We right now have approximately 200 customers, some of those of which are Cobb County, Paulding County, Bartow County and Douglas that we're doing these services for today. And we send out approximately 10 million bills a month. So we're doing these services that I'm showing you, very focused on quality and we do that every single day for all of our customers. We're also, to touch on the security issue, we're SAS 70 certified, which really has more to do with financial institutions and production of data. We're also PCI, which is Payment Card Industry Certification. That protects, you know, makes sure that our systems are set up to protect the card data. And then we are also NPTQM certified and a very close partner with the US Postal Service. NPTQM is a, it's a combination of Malcolm Baldridge and ISO 9000. It's a certification that's given out by the post office saying that all of our procedures are in place and that we're very high-quality output in our shop. So today, I'll take you quickly through, let's see, can you go to the next slide for me? So today, I'll take you through the processing system overview, how we take your data and we turn it into your documents and send them out to your customers. A little overview of the payment processing system so you can understand what we do and how the funds and reports flow. Also, the online customer experience from the bill pay standpoint and any kind of questions and discussions at the end there. Next slide. This slide here is a little busy, but it starts at the top with the data file. We basically take in data through a secure connection via, easily via FTP. And our systems are set up to process 24/7. So the minute your data file gets there, we will start processing it. So if you start on the left-hand side with the print and mail, these are basically the output options that we distribute documents, you know, in one or multiple ones of these type systems. So on the very left-hand side, we take the documents, we'll print, mail them, we insert them, we add the, we add the inserts which you were asking about. We also have the ability to put targeted messages on the actual statement themselves if you choose to do that. We can put inline inserts, you know, based on customer, customer information such as if you have high-value customers that you want to send certain messages to, we can put in targeted messages for those. And then the next option is email delivery. This is where someone has said, I'd like to get my bill via email. We will actually create the statement, we'll attach it to an email and we'll send it out, the notice to the customer, and it'll all be branded for City of Griffin. So with your logos, everything and all these emails, I'll talk a little bit more about all the email notifications, but in all the electronic delivery methods, we can send out emails to notify the customer either their document is online or it would be attached to the email. In all those emails, we can target those messages. So you can actually send very nice messages out to the customers who are receiving email if you would like. Again, we can, we can segment those by customer type, things like that, if you would, if you'd like to do that. Now, the next three, so those two methods are really what's considered our push methods, the email delivery and print and mail. Over on the right-hand side, these are three web-based solutions. One is a content-only, the other one's single sign-on and the other one's fully hosted. The content-only would basically, we would process your documents and then we would just produce a PDF to be displayed within your system if you chose to go that route. So all the web development work would be for City of Griffin. The single sign-on, that's a combination of work between City of Griffin and between Datamatics. And I think this is going to be the solution, Tom, that we have talked about, where you would use your web services from your Coggedale system and then, and maintain all the user profile and all the user, your customer information, your customer contact information, their email addresses and everything. We would continue to produce the documents and send out the email notification. But once the customer logs into your online portal at the point that they wanted to view their bill or pay their bill, they would launch through a secure connection to us and then we would display the documents for them and we would also allow them to do the bill pay. And I'll take you through what that's going to look like. And then the fully hosted process would be where we're maintaining everything. We would maintain the customer information, the login information, and then allow them to view their documents and pay their bill. So the presentation I have is actually the fully hosted, but I'll show you where the Coggedale system would connect in. So the presentation I have is actually the fully hosted, but I'll show you where, where the Cogswell system would connect in. So to the next one please. So a little bit more detail as far as the processing. Once we receive the data file, we have a lot of validation checks that we put in place to make sure that we're sending the right documents to the right people. We do a duplicate file check to ensure that we have never seen that file before in the history of you sending us documents. We validate the data, we check for totals, we check for a number of documents and things like that to make sure that we've received all the documents. We also do address processing, CAS and NCOA Link. If you're not familiar with that, the CAS is standardizing the address so that qualifies for zip plus four discounted postage. And NCOA Link is for people who have moved. If you're getting a lot of return mail from people who are moving and they're no longer at a certain address, we would process it through National Change of Address. All these services all come within the cost of what, what Tom presented. And in all of these, we would be returning processing reports for acknowledgements for the amount of documents we process, any addresses that we changed or any updates to addresses. We provide those back in a nicely formatted PDF also with a data file that can be automatically ingested into your systems. And then at this point is where, once people sign up for online bill payer, they want to get their documents electronically, we would actually split the file into two different streams. We would have a print and mail stream and electronic delivery stream. On the electronic side, if we send out an email that gets a bounce where we can't get that bill to that customer, we can immediately turn that bounce around and print it and mail it and send it the next day. Because like everybody in this business who sends out bills, you know, cash flow is very important. So we would want to get that bill while you're dealing with, we'll give you a report on whose email bounce, but while you're dealing with trying to get that customer information updated, we at least get the bill in their hands so hopefully your, their payments will be coming in. Next one? So that's the processing overview. As far as the payment processing, the way that works, the customer would be sent to the payment portal through multiple ways. But basically, as an overview, once they log in through the internet and they come into Datamatics' web services, we would authenticate that user and then actually take their credit card information on the screen. We do not store it. We actually pass it off to our credit card processor. That's the green box on the lower right-hand corner. We would pass the data to the electronic processing company, of which you would have a merchant account set up with them. That, that, they would then deposit, they would process the transaction, they would give us a real-time authorization so that we know that at that moment, that card should be good and the money, the fund should be available. They give us the transaction information back. We pass that over into your accounting system so that you can reconcile the funds. So we would pass the reports to you on the transactions that were processed and then the actual payment card processor transfers the funds into your financial institution. So at the end of the day, you can take our reports and their funds and actually reconcile your accounting system. That's just a quick overview of the payment processing. So the next one?
You're talking about debit cards, but you can also do?
ACH.
Debit cards and?
Yes, yes, that's through ACH. Next one? I'm going to skip, I'm going to skip over that one. So, so from a customer experience standpoint, basically, the customer would either get a printed statement that sends them to a website of where to pay their bill. We could put a link off of City of Griffin, their website or your payment portal. And then also through an email, we would, we would be sending out. So the customer could get notified of their bill multiple ways. So once they receive the bill. Next one? And this is the fully hosted, so I'll take you quickly through this since we're talking about a little bit different solution. The fully hosted process is where we would actually maintain the user account information. And in that process, you can either create a new account or they could just log in to pay their bill. So I'm going to skip through a couple of these slides. So go to the next one. One more? One more? And one more? And the next one? Okay, so here, basically, I just skipped through the, the online login information that we would do on the fully hosted mode. And this is really taking you to the first screen that the customer would see after they're coming from the Cogswell system. If you wanted us to track customers and if they're opted in or opted out, or if they want to opt in for electronic statements, this is where they would do that. We would, we would post the terms and conditions just like you would, you see on most websites. And they would agree to the fact that yes, they are opting in to receive their documents electronically. So we would capture that information and we could either do it on our end or you could do it at Cogswell and we could pass the data back and forth. This is the information that we use to determine which, which distribution stream to send the documents down. So once, then once they, they pass that screen. Next one? This is the main e-presentment screen that they would see. On the left-hand side, we're actually showing two customizable images, but we have the ability to put two or three marketing images there and that could, they could be sending them to different websites that you have available within the city. And we also can add multiple links, like if you want to put quarterly newsletters, things like that, we can link them and have them sitting on your server. We could just link those so that the customer could view any, any marketing or any information, privacy notices that you would want to show them. There's three, three main things on this screen that they can do. The first, under the accounts, that's where they can do account maintenance. If we choose to set up this option where they could change their email address, they could change, add an additional account. So if a customer actually had three pieces of property and they wanted to see all their water bills under one, we could link all those accounts together so that they could see all their different accounts under one login. The next major function is the statements. And we would list the number of statements based on your retention period. We could have, we have customers that have ninety days worth. We have customers that have three or four years worth of documents out there. And they would be listed by date, so whenever the run date happened, they just click on the link of the date and they would pull up the document. And the document would look exactly like the printed and mailed document. We don't have an online version or a printed version. Everything will look exactly the same. We produce a PDF, which is the exact replica of the printed document that we send out to the customer. And then the next major function is the payments. So under the payments, I'll take you through what that looks like. So next one? So basically, the screen is set up exactly the same way as the presentment screen. They would put in their, their credit card information and this actually shows, doesn't have the ACH. It shows just the credit card information, but the payment, ACH screen is very similar. And so on the right-hand side, the yellow box gives them all of their account information. That is basically static information based on the bill that you sent us that we would display. But we do have the ability to automatically connect to your system. And we're actually doing this with a couple of customers where we tie into their, their billing system so that we can get real-time, especially if it's a water shut-off situation because it's very costly to send somebody out there and they've already sent the payment in, things like that. If we can get the data out of their, out of your system to know that, that they're late, we can actually post that data. They can pay it tonight. You could get the information back that they've already paid their bill. So tomorrow morning, you're not going to send that crew out to actually cut their water off yet. So you, there's some savings there if we link real-time with the accounting system that you have here. But, but we don't have to do that. That's an option.
Well, what if they, now if they have to pay a late fee, if it's after hours or something like that, would we attach that?
Late fee will actually be on their next.
The next statement, okay.
Right.
And they're going to be cut off like at six o'clock right now as you're cut off to pay? If they pay like at six oh five online?
If they did that, that's the advantage of connecting real-time and that's what we've done with one of the utilities here in Atlanta, is we're connected real-time. So if someone does come at ten o'clock at night and pays their bill, we would, we would post that information back into your system automatically. So you'd know the next morning before you actually sent someone out to cut the water off. And that's why they did that, so that they would, they could save those crews and they could save all the administrative headaches to go out, cut it off and immediately cut it back on. So that's why they did that. The other thing, this screen shows is that we can apply a convenience fee to cover the credit card processing costs or all the transaction fees that you would encounter from Visa and MasterCard that, that, that static. The convenience fee would actually cover your processing cost. So next screen. So once they put in all of their information.
On that convenience fee, is that just on credit card or is that on debit cards as well?
It can be on both.
You mean what's staff's recommendation?
To do it on both.
Are you actually charged that fee by the bank?
Right.
Okay.
I have a question on the transaction. Is there a balance of the business provision of any payment? Paying, correct? And then payment, I have a question about that. But where are the, where are the money to conduct?
Yes. We're, we're always going to continue to report that if you can rather than. Right. So it's just actually your merchant account if the money goes, it doesn't all go. So once the customer inputs all the data, the next screen is just a confirmation screen and it clearly shows that their, their payment amount and their convenience fee amount and what they're paying. So when they hit submit. Okay, that's fine. So when they hit submit, they'll get an online receipt of the transaction. Can you back up one? So they'll, they'll get an online receipt of the transaction. They can also email that receipt to themselves or they can just print it out on the screen and it gives the transaction number and everything when they pay their bill.
Okay, let me clarify. I think I know this, but there might be some questions out here. We have many customers that live at a very basic financial level. They come in with actual US cash and little bank slips, little envelopes, pay their bills. So those kinds of folks will never see any difference. They're still going to get a bill in the mail. And life goes on as it has been. However, if you're the more advanced electronic payment method, credit cards or direct debit or whatever, then you can request to go this and you can transition completely to electronic if you so choose. So we have, everybody's covered from the most advanced financial to the, to the least in a seamless manner. So like my kids who've never written a check in ten years, they do everything electronically. They're happy. Us old fools that write checks, we're happy we get our printed thing.
All right, now, excuse me, Dave. Will you take over the complete mailing of our bills?
That's correct.
So we'll be changing care, providers to this Datamatics?
Well, we'll be, we'll be instead of us printing the bills out over the customer service, we will send Datamatics a file that has all that information in it. They will print the bills and mail them from that way.
All right, and then you deposit the, the bill, the money or the, the payment will be transferred to our computer showing that it's paid? All righty, into what financial institution does the money go?
Wherever our merchant, merchant, credit card merchant account is.
Where is it?
It'll go into the same bank account that our credit card payments are going now.
And where is, where is that?
Different, different, different process. It's PBT.
Okay.
Well, where the customer had it.
The customer's not going to see any difference in the way they're doing things, other than that they will now be able to do online payments which they cannot do now.
Right, and then you'll purge the, you'll purge the list if they choose online pay and you won't send out a bill? You'll send it online?
They can decide when they want to get a paper bill. If they have the option of getting a paper bill, getting an electronic notification that the bill is there, they can go on the website, view it, print it out or they can get both. We can still mail them a bill and they can get it, go online and see the bill as well. So they'll have all those options.
Okay, at no additional cost?
Cheaper.
Well, I know it looks like it's cheaper and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it, it seems redundant, you know, all of the steps, but go ahead.
What about debit card, debit card customer? They have the option of using it as a credit card?
Yes, sir, yes. Credit card, credit card is handling the exact same way.
Yeah, but if you pay through debit, then you're a credit card. If you pay through credit, then whatever company, V for whoever they use for that card. So if a customer paid, it would be advisable for the customer to pay through a credit card, use it as credit rather than a debit card.
Well, with the convenience fee, that's going to cover that transaction fee. So in both scenarios, the customer is going to be charged for that. Some companies don't charge that convenience fee and they just, you know, they, they absorb that two and a half to three percent transaction cost. That's something that no matter who does it, they don't have, you don't have any control over that. That's controlled by Visa and the merchant account that's set up. They're going to charge that, that transaction fee. So if it's a hundred dollar transaction, they're going to, they're going to take out, you know, you may only get ninety-seven dollars of that left back because Visa's going to take out their three percent.
Could someone pay by check, online check writing without having a fee? Or is there going to be, to go through this service, there's going to be a convenient charge no matter what?
Yes, as far as I know, there's a convenience fee no matter what.
So you will actually be sending, printing the actual bills that are mailed out too?
That's correct.
Who's customer, who's customer complained about, want to be wrong?
We've had, recently we've had problems with our printers, we've had problems with our stuffing machines. We've got quite a few challenges in doing it.
But the customer still complained to Laura? That's all I need to know.
I've got five, five quick questions. The, such as installing the inserts, such as consumer confidence reports, information on June Jan Main Street or whatever, will there be an additional charge for that additional insert?
There is a charge for the insert.
It's cheaper, cheaper than what we can do.
Okay. And then on the, you're showing on the agenda item ten that the current cost versus twelve point eleven cents per bill we send out versus ten ninety-five? That does include postage? I was just wondering how you're getting such a great deal, but so you got posted?
What they will have is they will be able to aggregate, if we have a customer with multiple bills, they'll be able to, you know, in a, in a bill run, they'll be able to aggregate those bills into a single envelope and do postage costs.
Yeah, because I get dozens of different envelopes of bills.
We talked about one time, like our business, we get thirty or forty bills a month, customers, stormwater bill for units vacant things. Will we start having like Doug Holberg and have all those listed on one statement now?
That's something I'm, I'm still having to look through. That's, that's a cost.
And if someone like had a water meter, had two water meters, right now they're getting a bill for the sprinkler irrigation water meter versus the regular?
Should be, if they have a, an irrigation meter, have a water meter, they should be giving both of those. The both of those should be on one state. There's no reason to have to have one state.
I'll talk to you on that one. And then sale of info, will your company be selling any of our customer info to marketing?
No, not at all.
Everything is kept internal?
Everything is kept internal and then, and it's actually deleted. We only, we keep two years' worth for historical purposes, but we can also delete all that data within ninety days if you choose to, we actually, so. So none of that, none of that data goes anywhere other than through our data processing equipment, our mail equipment is sent to the customer.
And will you be selling, doing advertisement on these web, on, will there be advertisement from outside?
No, there will not be.
So there's no advertising?
It's all, the only thing that's going to go on the website is what you want to go on.
And then do we see staff reduction potentially in terms of the City of Griffin since we're outsourcing this? How many persons are currently being employed to do what we do, or outsource?
They're going to be required to get, do the business functions. So right now, we're not interested.
But the stuffers and all, do we have like someone that does just the stuffing?
We have one person doing that, has something to do with that.
Sick.
Sitting in that position because of the labor, you know, the effect that he was hurting part-timers. And to do some of the business functions that is filling the apartment is, is filled now.
Thank you.
Pathetic.
I think this is, appears to me this is a smart business move, so.
I, I get questions about it and I like it too. It's not that I, I haven't gotten to the point where I trust putting a lot of personal information on computers. However, I have made hotel reservations through some of the travel services on, on the internet and I have to say I get better rates. And I have done that and so far, no consequences, but.
I use a credit card for the presentation. Would you like those? Do you have hard copies for each of you?
Right. No, I don't think I need a hard copy of that. But I'd like to, I hope eventually it will work where people will just get their bill online. We won't have to mail them a hard copy. Oh, I know, that's what he, that was earlier discussion.
That would be a disaster.
From an industry standpoint, what we really see happening is a lot of people are still receiving their paper, only about, I see stats where it's ten to fifteen percent on the high end, may get electronic. But a large portion of the payments are made electronically. So, the person gets the paper bill, but then they'll go online and pay their.
Yeah, I understand. The electronic transfer is a whole lot cheaper than people handling checks and recording all that, so driving down the cost of transactions.
But if you look across the different industries that we serve, we still, you know, send out quite a large percentage of the documents go out paper, but the payments come back electronic.
All right, we're, I understand we're voting on this tonight. How soon will it be implemented?
We're going to have approximately a six week implementation.
Six week? Okay. All righty. Is there, is there anything else we need to know, Tom? If not, we thank you all for coming and making this presentation. Marcus? Marcus, you notice he's nervous. He has to, he has to regulate and get all these things to, to agree. That's all right. You're, we understand. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we now will discuss New Mercy Church, property acquisition, city manager Kenny Smith will address it. Reverend Caldwell is here.
Census about ten thirty and we've got several items left to discuss. Did you want us to order out some lunch or what's the pleasure of the board?
No. I think if we get done by twelve, we're fine. We'll take lunch on our own.
Okay. I gave you a packet a couple of weeks ago in regard to New Mercy Church. As you know, and I've kept you updated over the last almost a year. New Mercy Church sent us notice that they would like to purchase the building and of course, since that is part of the Camp Northern property, that would have to be on a referendum, which we do have coming up this fall in our general election. So, I've given you the information and hopefully you've had an opportunity to study over that information. New Mercy Church actually had an appraisal done back when they initially wanted to lease the property or did lease the property back in two thousand and eight. And that appraisal at that time came in at ninety two thousand dollars for a property there that was in pretty sad shape at that point. New Mercy entered into a lease agreement in which for a dollar a year, we leased them that property for a five-year period under the understanding that they would make the property complete as how they wanted it with updates and a good bit of remodeling. So, the deal was, the rent was basically abated for them to make the property improvement. Since they've made those improvements, we got a new appraisal and now the property is valued at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, what we need to do is come to some agreement in order to put this on a referendum this fall. We need an agreement pretty quickly as to a purchase price for the building. Reverend Caldwell and I have went over these numbers and discussed it some and I've been out to the building periodically and I met with Reverend Caldwell and know that they're having an impact on that community and what they've done to that building is just tremendous. I invited him here this morning to, to discuss with you what your wishes might be and what his wishes are for the future of that property. So, I would certainly invite him to speak at this time and between the two of us, we'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have about what the future holds for this particular property.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning and we are so thankful for the partnership that we have experienced with the city of Griffin on this particular property over the past three years. As Mr. Smith eluded, we do have a five-year lease and at the end of the five years, the option to purchase, which we would like to exercise. I guess the purpose of, of me being here is for us to come up with an amicable sale price for the property. We did have the property appraised prior to us making the improvements and it did appraise for ninety two thousand dollars. However, I would like the board to consider that that appraisal was done in two thousand and eight prior to the drop of the commercial market. And I have talked with the appraiser and had that property been appraised today in the condition that it was in before we made the improvements, it would not have appraised for nearly the ninety two thousand that it did appraise for at the time that we did the property. And the city has recently had the property appraised for, and it came back at some hundred ninety thousand dollars, which is proof positive of the improvement that we have made in the property over the three-year period and not the five-year period. I just believe that, that we will come up with an agreed upon amount for the sale of the property. However, you know the community that we serve and the resources that we are able to generate could not possibly equate to the level of services that we provide to that community. We depend on partnerships in order to do what we believe God has called for us to do. And what I'd like to propose, and just for a point of reference, I would certainly like to see us put money into services as opposed to a building that was already salvageable at the time that we made the renovations. However, talking with Mr. Smith, it has been pointed out that it is against city regulations to actually give us the building. But I'd like for you to sell it to us for a dollar.
I imagine so.
Yes, we would. With the agreement that we put a certain amount of money into services, to provide services to the community. That's what God has put us here to do. And the more we have to put in the actual purchase price limits the amount that we have to actually do services with.
You know, and I can agree with what you're saying because the church is more than a building. However, that is protected property. And my problem with this is if we sell this building to you, then would you be allowed to take protected property and turn it around and sell it at a later issue when you didn't need it? And, but that's something that Mr. Whalen would have to address. And you've made wonderful improvements and I know that you've done a wonderful job. Your reputation precedes you because you are certainly a man of God and you've served our community. I rarely can go two weeks without hearing the name of Reverend Grady Caldwell, so I know what a service that you have done. This is a protected piece of property and that is something that I would like for our city attorney to address if possible. If the referendum were to pass and we sell the building, are we relinquishing all ownership to that portion of property and would he be allowed to sell it if for some reason they decided to relocate someplace else?
Yes, it'd be sold in an arms-length transaction, fee simple. So, it'd be the church's property.
I think this property is not part of the protected.
It is part of the original.
Nor the Camp North.
Camp Northern conveyance to the city. That's why we have to have the referendum requirement.
Once it passed in the referendum though, it would be free of that and it would be.
It's just like in years past, the city sold off property for promoted products.
Right.
Yeah. Some other uses out there.
What's the, what's the minimum legal amount that we can sell it for basis?
Well, there is no, no such thing. You have to put the terms of the proposed sale into the ballot question that goes on the referendum and then you got, have a majority of the electors voting in the referendum have to approve it.
But I guess the problem is from a fiduciary standpoint, you can't make a donation, so.
No.
I mean, the problem is, and that's what Reverend Caldwell and I have been trying to figure out, the problem is, you know, the building is worth X amount of money and you've got to somehow justify what you're getting in return for that building without making a donation.
Well, generally speaking, when we deal with property to make it transparent and legal, we deal with the appraised values. That's correct. And that way, we're covered up here that nobody's getting a special deal. So, appraisals are sort of the legal basis, generally speaking, correct? They are and probably the only real exception is let's say you've got a potential residential lot that the city's acquired through some method, maybe a tax sale or some donation or something. But you decide to sell it, you would have it appraised, but you could sell it on condition, for example, that somebody put a, you know, an affordable home for low-income individual on that property as a condition of selling it to them. And if somebody comes in and meets those terms, but at a lesser price, often governments will sell under those conditions. This is kind of unique. I don't know of many situations where government sells land for, for a church. But I think what you're, the determinant's going to be is, you know, what is the fair market value?
Because they get credit.
How much credit does he get for what the church has done thus far?
Right. That's, that's what I was wondering.
I hope we don't overlook the fact that, I, I live in that area and I hope, I hope we don't overlook the fact that what he's doing with our future, which is the youth in the city of Griffin. He's doing a tremendous job, I know this, with, with our youth. And I hope there's some kind of way that we can work with him and try to help him with our future. I'm hoping that we can do that, some kind of way we can come up with some kind of solution to help him with our future.
Would this come under a category where we could, before we made any decision, we could have a session on it so that since it's real estate and we could see?
Our only problem.
Where we can talk about this?
We do have the at-large election, the at-large seat coming up for election this fall.
Right.
And this being a special referendum, we have to obtain, once you take final election, to call the election, we have to obtain Justice Department pre-clearance, which requires sixty days. That's pushing us frankly that if this is a decision that can't be made by probably your first meeting in August, we may miss that window of doing it this, this November. Now, we can always call an election. I think the next special election date comes up like in March of next year. And that may be a good time because we possibly, let's see, Terry's back here, possibly may have some presidential primaries and all coming up. Right. You know, I, I think if we miss it now, we can catch it then, is what I'm saying to you, though, because you still will have all your voting precincts open for that, for the presidential primary.
Well, we've got this what, fiduciary responsibility. I'd like to see him get credit for all the improvements, but, you know, I'm just one person here and we know what he's done in the community. I, I read it and looked at it, but really not, other than the fact you clarified the, the protection would leave, you know, and we don't anticipate him ever leaving the site. But that was what I was wondering, well, does it revert back to the protective status of the Camp Northern agreement?
I don't want you to feel that you're, you know, so compressed by time to get it on the November ballot. If this is something you need some more time to work on, I think we could do it effectively sometime in the spring, early summer of next year.
The numbers are not going to change.
Yeah, the numbers.
The numbers are what they are and like Reverend Caldwell said, the initial appraisal for ninety two thousand was before the drop in the, in the values. The appraisal at a hundred and ninety thousand is basically, that difference of a hundred thousand dollars is basically the improvements that they've done to the building. According to the appraiser, you know, that extra hundred thousand is because of what they did to the building. So, they've got basically a hundred thousand dollar investment in the building. So, you take the ninety two thousand that it was appraised at before the bottom fell out, figure out what it's worth now, give them credit for a hundred thousand of their improvements and.
And we also get the rent.
About what it's worth, but it's going to be.
We also get the rent abatement for the last.
And the rent abatement.
Which they normally would have had to pay.
Right.
Well, I, I feel.
But that's not going to change between now and spring or summer or whatever.
I think they've done a marvelous job, Master Caldwell, and I think they're an asset. I don't have any disagree with what Shahir said, the others, and I think you're doing a wonderful job. But as a fiduciary responsibility, if I have to tell the voters, I would have to tell them this by first thought is, it was appraised at ninety two. Now, you can argue whether that was based on the market back then, but you increased the value, which you've done. So, if you took it back to the ninety two, the appraisal then and sold it, you sold it to what it was appraised at at the time, that, that covers your fiduciary. I think if you go below that, you'd have to stand in front of the voters and say, why are you selling it less than your appraised value? Also, I think there's a real chance that if you sold it much less than that, the voters would have a good reason to vote it down, say, why are we selling something less than the appraised value? And they're going to have to approve this. I couldn't stand there, tell them, yeah, we're selling less than appraised value, but we don't do that to other folks, generally speaking, so. You have to face the voters with this. You cannot expend public funds on a question of this nature to sway them, you know, influence the voters one way or the other. So, it's going to be, you know, up or down, up to them to vote it up or down. So, I could, I could easily say I'd approve the ninety two, the original appraisal and you could put that, the voters would understand that. If you want it less than that, I don't think it's fair to go more than that because you've done the work. All that increase in value is your equity that you did. But on the other hand, I don't think you could put for the voters less than that, tell them that you're giving them a less than appraised value deal. So, I think that'd be tough.
Reverend Caldwell, you have done an outstanding job. I have attended your church. I think you're doing a fabulous job. My question to attorney Whalen, this would not be the first time that a building, or Mr. Smith, that a building has been sold for a dollar or whatever. Checking the records, if I recall, if I'm not mistaken.
Probably not be the first time, however, I don't know of another situation in the last, say, thirty, thirty-five years where the city has sold any of the property. It was part of the Camp Northern conveyance. And what we have, that property came to the city of Griffin through the state of Georgia with the condition on it that before we could sell or alienate ourselves of title to it, we had to have this referendum and approval. Now, as Dick and I, Joanna have both said, there is a fiduciary obligation in order to get, get the voters to approve the sale. I think they're going to have to be comfortable that the city's getting a fair deal, you know, in return for the value of the property.
I think we should leave that to the voters. We keep assuming that the voters are not going to approve it. And I'm assuming that they will. I'm looking at it as more positive. And I think I have a bigger interest maybe than any commissioner up here because I attended school there from the first through the seventh grade. And so, that is very important to me. But I have confidence that a God-fearing man that's working for God is going to do the right thing with the building. And I think most voters would have that same, would form that same opinion. So, I don't see a big problem with the voters.
I can't agree with that because I agree with you.
I know you wouldn't, Dick, but.
This is, this is in your district.
I know you wouldn't.
And it approved your district, which I, I'm all. Why would folks in another district?
It's Joanna's district.
Vote to give away civic, civic, city property for a buck?
Probably because they don't think like you.
Well, if we didn't do it to anybody else.
That's your opinion.
Well, the, from a different perspective, another reason that time is of the essence is because if the price that the commission sets is, is more than a dollar, I'm going to have to use time to generate the partnerships that are necessary to pay for the property. We, as a church and the community God has assigned for us to serve, cannot afford to even pay for a building. And we depend on outside partnerships. But I, I believe God has shown himself faithful to provide everything that we need to do what he's called for us to do. So, I'm, I'm saying that to say that I'm going to need as much time as I can generate to come up with the resources to pay whatever price that is set.
If, if, if it goes on a referendum, as, as part of referendum, it has to be a dollar amount set in the-
Yes, the terms of sale have to be expressed. If the referendum fails, is the church willing for a long-term lease, or can the city continue a long-term lease to Grady Caldwell? And if that, if so, what is the fair amount after the five-year lease or after this?
Well, the current lease started out at five hundred dollars a month, and then after the initial term, went to a thousand dollars a month. But that was abated based on the improvements.
Correct.
So, right now, it's still a dollar a month or a dollar a year?
Through two thousand twelve, yeah, two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve.
Yeah, through two thousand-
I have a, once you transfer title to property and it becomes your property, you can do with that property whatever you choose, and if your, your, the population shifts and decides to go to a different church, and, and people are particular into the church, you know, different churches that they go to, I think church attendance has fallen in all of the churches since nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty. We have a tangible piece of property here that technically it belongs to the city through a grant. I couldn't sell it to you for a dollar. I, I think that my, my constituents would, would pull my hair out, because they would say, you know, separation of church and state gets mighty ticky here, and I, I would certainly want to give you credit for all the improvements that you've made. I might would even come down on what the appraised value was several years ago, the ninety-two, but I think this is something that the seven of us are gonna have to discuss. Uh, I'm, I wouldn't be comfortable making a decision right now, and, but it's, and it's not on our agenda tonight to vote on. Uh, I know that you have done, I've been in your church as well when we first started, and I know that, Mr. Shepherd, I know the, the, your partners in all of this endeavor. Uh, but this is a tangible piece of property, and, and we do have a responsibility to the citizens to make sure that we treat everyone equally. Uh, we, sometimes they don't think that we do, and so, uh, I have no problem selling it to you, please understand that, but I think that we've got to have a price on it that the public can accept.
Right, and, and I can appreciate that, and, and there's no doubt in my mind that, that we will come up with an agreeable, uh, uh, amount for that to happen. Um, I, I just pray that in that decision, that you consider the, the, the more that we are having to put into the property, the less that we have for actual service.
To the people, I understand that, right.
And I want to pour as much into the chain, into changing the fabric of that community, and, and it takes resources to do that.
Uh, you're absolutely right, sir, I agree completely.
Ms. Todd?
Yes.
That's your question. You and Mr. Smith spoke about, uh, back in the past, this, uh, property was, uh, that's for ninety, I guess ninety-five thousand?
Ninety-two.
It appraised for ninety-two at the, at the time that the-
And that's a hundred, ninety-two thousand, so-
Hundred ninety.
Uh, from my understanding, listening to you and Mr. Smith, that about a hundred thousand dollars have been, work have been put into the building.
Fifty-seven thousand, about, yeah.
But I'm quite sure, I think the words you used, please, on Reverend Caldwell, understanding is the best thing in the world, but I'm quite sure when people realize what came from was that now, people that understand it will understand whatever it is, you know, so, keep that in mind also.
Right.
The other thing now I wanna point, point out, uh, Ms. Todd, is that we have actually placed in that building somewhere in the area of, uh, sixty thousand, maybe fifty-some thousand dollars-
And we had that in this letter too.
Of, I, I'm talking about of, of actual dollars. That doesn't even include, uh, all the volunteer labor and other resources, uh, that have, have been placed.
Right, and I, and I can appreciate that, and I understand that, sir. It's just, you know, like I say, this is, this is a tangible piece of city property, and we've got to make sure that, uh, while I'd give it to you, I, I'm not allowed to.
I, I, and I understand.
And he has to stop me all the time, cause I would, you know, uh, I think when you're serving people and you're changing their lives, it's the most important thing we can do. Uh, but my, my thought is that we may not make November, but if we can come to a term that you will have time to raise the money, if it's a, a reasonable amount, that we'll have that time by the, uh, primary vote in February.
Could we have a referendum in terms of the dollar, and if it fails, come back with another referendum? Yes, the limitation is how many, you know, times?
Do we have to, we have to put the dollar amount?
You've got the cost of the election is probably, Terry, help me out, what's the cost of the election, about seventy-five hundred dollars or so? Yeah. Well, I mean, if you have an election going on, though, if you did it at the same time we did another-
Or at the primary.
Well, I could very easily-
Are there primaries in this month?
Yeah.
Well, what, what's the cost to add on to, when we're not having an election at all, to add on to your election?
Uh, I could do that, but I think probably just forget it, or ask the chairman, or the president.
Which might be how much?
Uh, anywhere around eight thousand.
Yeah, costs us eight thousand dollars.
I mean, that's, that's why I was trying to get it on the November ballot.
But in the November election, there would not be an added cost with there.
Well, I, I'd support-
No, that's our election.
Appraisal at ninety-two, because I could stand in front of my district and my voters and say, that's the appraised value then, what they put in now is what they've done, but I can't go back to my voters over there and say, oh, we're, we're giving this church a special deal, we wouldn't give other folks, so I, I agree to the appraisal, but I can't go below that.
Can I throw something out, uh, hearing the man said, um, uh-
Well, it ranges from one dollar to ninety-two thousand evidently.
Well, let's, I, I guess that falls in the range of what I was about to propose. I, I would be willing if, if the city commission would, would be agreeable, um, to settle on a sale price of fifty thousand dollars.
Put that on the November ballot, and then just see what it-
That, that's about what the property would've appraised for had we not made the improvements today.
Right, uh, and what would be the appraised value, even though I know you don't pay taxes, what would be the appraised value put on by the, the, uh, which is about forty percent less than what the sales price would be? Like if the pri, if the property were a hundred thousand dollars, the county takes off, uh, will give you forty thousand, and that, how much?
It's forty, seventy.
Forty percent.
Forty percent assessment.
I could accept fifty thousand, yeah, I could accept that.
If, if we can agree on that, I, I would be willing to do that.
Because it's completely defendable.
Can we, uh, like you said, maybe come back and discuss it over the board?
Yeah, uh, we, we would need to discuss this before our next meeting, so, uh, we, we can't come to a consensus this morning, but in August-
My intent, my intent for us to hopefully reach an agreement today, so we could vote on it at the first meeting in August, and then-
I'll draw a resolution for you to-
We, we, we can't discuss it in the next two weeks?
Well, you're not gonna meet the November election.
Well, we can't vote this morning anyway.
No, ma'am, I, what I'm, no, no, what I'm saying is if we can reach an agreement today, we'll draw up a resolution to vote on at the next meeting, which would make the time limit.
Let's just see if you can reach a consensus to go ahead, and we'll prepare a resolution at fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
And then you can put that on the agenda for the first meeting in August, and y'all can discuss it before you vote.
Either vote it up or down.
All righty, I, I, would you, uh, would you like to comment?
What is the, um, fair market rent on that now? A thousand dollars?
The fair market, I have no idea. The, the lease was for five hundred to go to a thousand after the fifth year.
Okay.
Um, one other thing I'd like to say, uh, Mr. Morrow, you spoke earlier about, uh, other churches, but as long as I've been on the board, uh, to my recollection, uh, we haven't had another church come in front of us, but if you're gonna do it like this, just make sure we keep it even across the board.
That's what I'm saying, uh, we have to be consistent in what we do.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying-
Not blow appraisal.
We haven't had a church to come before us. This is the first time this happened.
Well, I know that appraisals are way down because of the economy. I, I, like I said, I could accept, I could accept, and I think the people in my district would completely understand fifty thousand dollars. That gives you credit, and it gives, it's a fair price, it's a fair price for the property.
It's one that we can live with.
Right, so, I, if, if we were to vote, I would vote that way, I would vote yes.
Well, it looks like this board's prepared to agree to that, which is okay, I mean, that's, but, but I'm not gonna vote less than the appraised value, because I think that's consistent, so, y'all can overvote me, but that's fine, that's the way it goes here, so, but, but I can't stand in front of my district and tell them we're selling somebody less than what was appraised at, when we don't do it for others.
Dick, your district has had quite a few foreclosures. I think people would completely understand the value of property has gone down in the last three years.
Oh, no doubt, but it just was appraised at one ninety.
Well, yeah.
Now, which has been appraised at the present, thanks to their work, what they've done, we're not asking that, that one ninety, cause that's what you put into it. I, I understand all that.
Could we, could we vote on this? Uh, uh, I agree with Mr. Smith, I think we should, uh-
We can't vote on it this morning, this is a workshop.
Not voting on it, can we?
Would you like, is it too late to add it to the agenda tonight? Actually, all he's asking for is a consensus.
I don't have time to get the resolution.
I mean, if you just give me a consensus, we'll get it put together.
He just wants a consensus. All right, those that are willing to accept a lower price than ninety-two thousand, a price of fifty thousand is, uh, as mentioned by Reverend Caldwell, uh, show me your hands.
Consideration.
Right, consideration. All right, you've got, you've got a consensus, a majority consensus here to consider it.
We'll do it for the next meeting.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much for coming, Reverend Caldwell.
I appreciate you, thank you for your partnership.
Right, all right, and on our next agenda, since Terry has been so patiently sitting out there, I'd like to change our commission topics from the travel policy to the filing responsibilities of elected officials. We'll take a little short break, and then Terry, if you will come forward so we can see you, and you can help us with-
I think that lunch is in order too.
Huh?
I think that lunch may be in order.
Well, I, hopefully, uh, maybe we'll, maybe we'll finish this, I know Sheehy, maybe we'll finish this before lunch. Uh, in December, or actually, last year in October, our registrar told us that we, uh, that does, the Ethics Commission had changed, the people in the state of Georgia has, has developed a new office, right, and it's now called the Georgia Government Transparency and Campaign Finance Commission. And in that, which hits us, is we have to do our disclosure report so many times, uh, we were advised that our December report was the last one that could be filed by, through, using the city of Griffin's facility. And so, therefore, it didn't mean that we couldn't have help from the city of Griffin, it just meant that we could not, no longer could our registrar, Judy Florinoy, uh, send our, just mail our disclosure reports using city funds or use the city computer to do this. Uh, we've had a really difficult time, I think all cities, or even counties, those who are up for rea, up, up for reelection, those who have to file June the thirtieth, have had quite a quandary in getting everything into this particular office. Uh, and of course, the, the penalty fees are enormous if we don't do it timely. Uh, Terry has been very courteous and very nice to give us a copy of the bill, of the campaign reform, and, uh, it, I haven't read all of it, but I've read enough of it to understand that now as elected officials, if we're smart enough to run for government, we ought to be smart enough and savvy enough to be able to file individually, because the individual is now being held responsible. Did I pretty well say that, Terry?
Yes.
Come up to the mic if you don't mind, dear.
If Judy or anybody within the city government or county government for that fact helped any of you file this, or even anything having to do with these reports, it's considered a contribution, and as you know, governments cannot contribute to political campaigns. So, that's, that's where we are right now.
Okay, I, I pinpointed on one thing, it says that, that they, says you cannot, uh, let's see, the, the commission has also asked us to remind you that the email address you provide cannot be one assigned to you by the city of Griffin, and that it is a violation of state law to use local government equipment for campaign purposes. Now, where does it say that you cannot have, that she, that our registrar or you cannot assist us in understanding the report that we're filing?
On page thirteen of that thing that she gave you, it's OCGA twenty-one dash five dash thirty point two B. It prohibits government agencies or employees thereof to assist in a personal campaign. That includes, but is not limited to, previous duties of a filing officer, which is what Judy and myself were considered at the time, filing officers, assisting with campaign disclosures, using government emails, computers, personnel, or any government resource.
Okay, now-
And that is consistent to what the city and county attorneys were told in our training by the then-director of this commission last fall. Uh, I think the lady has now been relieved and moved on, but-
Well, I think she's there for a few more months.
Yeah, well, whatever. Her message was to us at the time, that as city and county attorneys, we cannot provide, uh, services, and really, they did not want us to provide advisory opinions, uh, they said it clearly would not be binding on the commission, only they can give you an opinion if you have a question. Uh, just to add to that, I was sitting in the city clerk's office in Gainesville two weeks ago, and she had a call, and, uh, they interrupted us to say that she had a call from the Ethics Commission, and she went up to take it. They had had a council person who had filed online, who, according to the commission, did not receive the online filing, and it's probably because some mistake was made in the, the process, but the city clerk had called and tried to discuss it with them to see if they could do something, and she came back, she said, I guess I've been put in my place, said they told me that I could not get involved as a city clerk in handling this, it's the individual's problem to have them call me, so-
We can't, we can't even remind you that a point that I've reported to now. We can't send out any reminders or pick up the phone and call you and say, don't forget about your June thirtieth report, we can't even do that.
Can we use, uh, the, the city for notarizing it? Get it notarized, if you need it notarized?
Everything is online, excellent.
Mine has to be noted.
I, I would think you certainly-
Yeah, now, right, because they do still allow you to mail in a paper ballot.
Right, as long as it's, as long as it's there on time.
Right, and so, apparently, they've taken out the notarization, because Judy always notarized the reports, that she had received them, as a registrar.
I think what the city was talking about, initial of when we sent, we had to set, actually fill it out-
Yeah.
And mail it, and it had to be notarized.
Right, and the notar-
But he denied, because he came on late, we started, I think we started getting information, we were getting information, but-
It was September October last year.
He didn't get it, he, he was not, for whatever reason.
Yeah, he didn't get seated until October.
The only thing he would have disclosed would be his financial disclosure report-
In June.
June thirtieth.
Right.
Well, I did have to get something notarized.
Well, and everybody had to do a campaign financing in June as well.
All right, now, Judy-
It is not your election.
Terry, now, answer that then, they are allowing paper filing, if you're not, you know, don't use the computer.
Right.
All right, he said he had to get it notarized.
That was the original form that we had come out.
Right, that was the original form.
He didn't get it, he didn't get it.
All right, this last one in June, did you have to have it notarized?
No.
Or did you send it by computer?
Just the original, just the original form.
Okay, the original one, yeah. So, how will, how will you handle candidates for, uh, office this year? How will that be handled?
We are to refer them to the Ethics Commission or whatever their new name is.
So, we will file with them that we're, all of that. They're taking you completely out of this.
We are completely out of the loop. All we're, we're told now, we are what's called qualifying officers. When you come to my office to qualify for your seat this fall, um, we will let them know who has qualified and for what seat, and it will be up to, it'll be up to the candidate and the Ethics Commission to get together and get in the cycle of reporting.
All right, so, in essence, then, I had asked, uh, Mr. Smith, why do we need a registrar now for the city?
Because the law requires that you have a municipal registrar. Even though we conduct your elections, there has to be one point of contact in municipality, because if you, if you take us out of the loop of your elections, it falls onto them.
Do we pay you to do our elections?
You pay us expenses.
All right, then, I, again, I repeat, if we're gonna do everything through you, why do we need to have a registrar?
Well, as she said, state law requires that we still have one.
Yeah. What is, uh, the, uh, descri, job description or for the registrar other than?
Actually, they could register voters, you know, I mean, as a rule, we send them-
Registrar voters, not, not care, I'm saying, we have to have a registrar.
Right, municipal registrar.
So, what is, what would, uh, the duty? So what is, what would the duty be?
As I said, if you read the elections code, the registrar could actually register voters voting city elections. As a practice, we don't do that. We send them over across the street to register at the county office.
Okay, but other than that, what?
Assist the county board as far as conducting elections and really kind of the liaison between the city, the contact point of the city and the election board.
Duplication. I mean.
Well, it may be, but that's the way the state government structured it.
And it does not, and it still.
I can't tell you we can't have one because the state law says you shall have one.
Right, so there are some cities that conduct their own elections.
Oh, many.
Yeah.
Many, and well, it's probably less today.
Yeah.
It's a lot less today.
Actually, under the Service Delivery Strategy Act of nineteen ninety-seven, there's some language in there about county boards conducting elections for municipalities. And that was one of the things where we saw that was duplication and overlap in government. But still, when that was passed, it did not eliminate the position, the required position of the municipal registrar.
So, well.
So what I'm taking away from this, we're required by state law to have a registrar, therefore we'll have one. Number two, if you're a candidate or an official, you're expected to be responsible, go online and file those or fill a paper and send it in.
That's right.
And Judy is not to be involved in those.
Our registrar, yeah, Judy just happens to be our registrar.
Or any city.
Right, and so that's why I'm saying that I would challenge this law that you, if you farm out, if you, you know, farm out your registrar, that you're obligated immediately to keep one on board. The Spalding County Board has done the city elections since nineteen ninety or even earlier, ninety-two?
Bring up Mr. Yates and Mr. Light, maybe we.
Yeah, the, listen, I have no idea, you know, I believe that a candidate should be responsible. I mean, it's time that really this took place, you know. The only thing is, some candidates may not really depend on the computer like other people.
That's true.
And so when I was, when I was talking with the office there, they said that paper disclosures, they would still accept them. And so then the question would come, why do they have to be notarized? You're not notarized on the computer. And so that would be one thing that I would, like Shere said, he had to have it notarized if he mailed in a ballot. And Will, if Will doesn't want to do it, or Cynthia, or me, you know, my computer's not always kind to me. Sometimes it won't pull up the right thing that I keep hitting it at. But basically, everything is on the disclosures and everything else will be filed on the, with the Ethics Commission.
Yes ma'am, and they offer a website. I mean, they offer workshops. If anybody needs a refresher course, if you'll go on the left side of their homepage, they'll list a list of workshops that they're currently having. Some of them are just as simple as completing the form. And they also have some about electronic filing.
Okay.
So that's, you know, that's an option if you think you need a refresher course.
Right, now, mine did prompt me. I filed electronically in April and then I got an electronic prompt that by June the thirtieth, I would have to file a disclosure. So I was pleased about that because we had become so dependent upon Judy, our registrar, reminding us about these things that, you know, we didn't even pay much attention to when they were viewed. But now we have to. Okay, are there any questions from the other commissioners on this?
When you file electronically, do you get a confirmation number or some sort of receipt?
You have a C number and a financial disclosure. You've got a C number for campaign. You've got an F number for financial disclosure report. So you got your own password and everything. They email that to you. And then in the June statement, they send it like ten days in advance, a reminder notice that you've got to do, so.
And then they confirm that you did.
Confirm that you got it.
They give you the sheet that you.
I would certainly hang on to those somehow, you know.
Yeah, I, that's the one file I keep right where I can put my hands on it at all times.
They are in a state of confusion, I think.
Oh, they're tremendous. And this could change.
Their executive director and local budget cuts, and so they're kind of in a state of confusion, which is why they waived everybody's late fee for the June report.
Oh, they did? Well, I am glad for that because they.
They didn't waive mine.
They didn't?
And I wasn't late.
Because there was something on the top of their webpage that because of all the, you know, the massive amounts of people filing for the first time, they were waiving the June fee.
Oh, she said the June fee, that was when they filed. She's not talking about, because you just filed.
Oh, it is June, isn't it?
Yeah, no, 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 right, everyone had to file the June. Well, then, Shere, you need to go.
And then they charge meal feed is not even on. They charge three seventy-five and it's not even on here.
Yeah, go back and tell them they owe you money.
So I tell them Terry said.
No, no, no. Just tell them what I went on top of their webpage.
This could be a new business you could create, right? And that's a campaign disclosure report firm.
That's true.
And I know that Mr. Yates has somebody that's been doing his for years.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got some young man in his office or something that's been doing his for years.
Right, I just assigned my granddaughter, which I love. Okay, all right, any other questions about this? All right, Terry, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Terry.
And thank you for all of the material that we needed that we didn't have. Okay, very good. Okay, now we'll go back and briefly discuss our travel policy. All right, we've had some questions on our travel policy, on reimbursement of expenses. Why we did not get, when we turn, we have ten days to do our travel receipts into, to the clerk's office. And they, and everything is prompt there, but our commissioners get paid once a month. And so therefore, in the last maybe eight months or maybe a year over a year, we're not reimbursed our travel expenses until the end of the month when we get a paycheck. And so that, some people have asked me why we're doing that. And I had a lengthy discussion with Mr. Smith yesterday and he said that, you know, they issue checks weekly. We only get paid monthly, so they didn't, it was a little bit more trouble to go to, to issue a report, to write a check for commission expenses. So I don't know how this sits with everybody else. I know we've been to GMA over a month ago and we're still, hopefully, we'll get our expenses reimbursed to us this week. But previously, and I didn't see it in the travel policy where we had verbally or had changed it. What is wrong, why can't we get the expenses as soon as they've been approved by the city manager and the mayor or mayor pro temp?
We can do that, they go through payroll, so because y'all only get paid once a month, we didn't see any need to cut a special check. We just put them on your payroll when you got paid once a month. If that's causing a hardship, we can put it through the weekly payroll and give you a special check when payroll's cut weekly. If that's a problem, I just, I didn't know it was an issue until now, but we can do that.
I had just had, been asked questions about it because the procedure had changed. And it was not, we vote on the travel policy and.
Well, the procedure was an internal procedure where used to, and Marcus can address this, but used to, we would get a reimbursement form and we would cut a check through AP.
Yeah, you would cut a different check, right.
Now, through IRS regulations, and Marcus again can touch on that, it goes through payroll, not through AP. So all the staff gets any travel reimbursement through payroll, not through a special cut, a check that's cut through accounts payable. And because you guys only get paid once a month, we just waited and put it on your monthly check. But like I said, if that's a problem, we can cut you a special check when we do payroll once a week.
Well, I think it's a matter.
As far as I'm concerned, you can get paid weekly. It doesn't, I don't know that it matters.
I think we voted several years ago to, we used to get paid twice every bi-weekly when I first came on board. And I think we voted to make it monthly.
Yeah, I don't know why y'all get paid any different than we do, actually.
Right, it's.
Huh?
Yeah, once a month is fine, but you're right, and it used to be the same. And somewhere down the line, it got changed. Tell me about IRS regulations. Now, you don't take, it's included in the check, but you make sure that there aren't, there's not insurance taken out of it and FICA and all that. Is that correct?
That's correct. The IRS requires that all these reimbursements be consolidated and contained in one area. Specifically, it addresses the accountable plan, which is what we have, where the expenses paid or incurred, they're deductible expenses while performing services and by the employees. The reimbursement or advance must be paid for the expense and must not be an amount that would have otherwise been paid by the employee. Two, they must substantiate these expenses to the employer within a reasonable period of time. And they must return any amounts in excess of substantiated expenses within a reasonable amount of time. If there are, and the language in the IRS regs are specific. If the employee receives compensation in excess of the allowable, that excess is taxable income to the employee. And the only way we can capture that information is through the payroll process. So all these records, all the meals, all the transportation, all the tuition, hotel, anything that gets reimbursed to the employee must get processed through the payroll system, whether it's taxable or not. At the onset, it's deemed not taxable until we've proven otherwise. So if an employee incurs a receipt for meals, then that is reimbursed through the payroll process as a non-taxable business expense. If the employee gets reimbursed for ten dollars and they spent eight dollars, that two dollars is deemed taxable income because the eight dollars was substantiated with a receipt. The difference is then itemized on the employee's tax return on Schedule A. So without getting too far into the tax return side of it, the IRS regs are clear that we have to run this.
If the employee, excuse me here now, you say if the employee only spent eight dollars for a meal, then the two dollars that he would be allowed would be considered taxable income?
If, it depends on how we've structured the policy. It depends on how the rules are created. It specifically states that the substantiated expense or the allowable expense, whatever the organization deems allowable, for example, we allow ten dollars, correct?
Yes.
Up to ten dollars. If we require that we only pay up to the amount of the receipt or the substantiated expense, then technically, under the law for the IRS, the two dollar difference, if they didn't substantiate it, excuse me, they did substantiate the eight dollars, we paid ten, then.
But you don't do that.
We don't do that. We pay the eight dollars, correct?
Right, where I, and I've had some conversations with employees of the City of Griffin, and I've discussed this with Mr. Smith. We have a per diem rate and of fifty dollars a day for food. Some people spend the eight dollars, some people spend the ten dollars. The person who spends the eight dollars technically has lost two dollars if he's not been reimbursed that. I would like to, I'd like to see how other governments do. If you have a per diem rate of fifty dollars a day, I would think that, I personally believe the city should allow that fifty dollars to go to the employee and not have to worry itself with how that employee has spent that fifty dollars that is there for his food. I don't know how the other governments do that. I think that it would be interesting to, for us to check that out and see how other governments do that. I think it's kind of a morale loser to employees when they've got, they've gone out for training, et cetera, and they have expenses at home that they have to leave a family to take care of. My previous experience with the federal government was that we were set X amount of dollars per day for per diem. We could have that, and then if we needed an advance on it to cover our expenses, we got an advance up to a certain portion of what they allowed. And then when you come back, you make, you present your expense record to them. And they either, you know, they may charge you or you, I've never known that. They deduct what they advanced to you and give you the difference in your travel expenses. Not knowing how other governments around here do it. Ryan, how does the school system handle it?
Well, we run it through accounts payable. Again, we don't, we don't run it through payroll. So I was trying to follow exactly, I mean, if we've stated how we're handling it a certain way, why would need to go through payroll. I'm still not clear on that. We don't, ultimately, I guess the income part of it would be above the state travel reg, fifty-one cents or something on mileage. And we don't ever go above that and actually, we only do twenty-five cents right now for a mile. But we just, everybody turns in, we don't require a receipt for the food basically if they're under the allowable amounts for breakfast, lunch, dinner. Technically, it's a per diem there as well. As long as they're under that, then we're fine. We require receipts for everything else.
When you say a per diem, is it per diem given before they leave or when they come back?
No, no, when they come back.
And I want to ask a question, and I know you're talking about this, Joanne. Looking at the difference between the employees and the commissioners. Question, I know for the commissioners, our per diem is what, forty dollars per day? And why, why, why ours are lower than the employees? And it says forty dollars a day. Are we using the, when it says of a hundred thousand, are we using the hundred thousand, the two hundred thousand people to the city we're going, or are we using Griffin as a?
No, it's to the city you're traveling to.
Okay, but my understanding is basically, the only place we go is to Atlanta and to Savannah. But we're still using this forty dollars as our cap on per diem.
Because sometimes meals are included in the trainings and stuff like that too, though, or dinners.
Yeah, it is, but it's not always.
Well, I have a whole different take on it. I think, of course, I don't ever charge for meals because I think I have to eat a meal here whether I'm in Griffin or away. So I don't think it's right to charge a taxpayer for my meals, period. So I don't do it. But even at that, ten, twelve, and eighteen is more than I would spend in any of those meals, so I think it's very generous.
If I may also add to that, setting a flat per diem for breakfast, lunch, and dinner and establishing a timeframe. Florida, for example, the Broward County, the clerk of courts where I came from, and actually Florida is one of those cities and counties that's actually listed in IRS Publication fifteen forty-two on how they treat their per diems. It's based on the clock. If the travel requires leaving prior to six o'clock in the morning because you have to be wherever, then they get a breakfast. If it's an over lunch deal and there's no lunch provided with the itinerary, lunch is per diem, twenty dollars.
Our policy does that as well.
Okay, and then it's a flat rate. So there's no back office auditing of all those individual eight dollar, five dollar, ten dollar receipts, which takes a tremendous amount of time. If we set the time where if the conference starts at nine o'clock and you leave at your normal commute hour, there's no need for per diem.
Our current employees have to provide a receipt in order to get reimbursed.
A detailed receipt, yes. Not just the credit card charge. The policy expressly states an itemized receipt.
The, well, the few employees that, and I, and they will remain anonymous, have, they have felt that it was demoralizing in a sense that we set a policy and we, you know, and some training is required. Now, I, again, I think that if we set that someone can spend up to fifty dollars a day, who cares if they only spend two, they can spend ten dollars for breakfast. Who cares if they only spend two dollars and a half?
I agree.
I, you know, that's, there's so much control that I just, I don't, I would like to see a report where they, you gave the fifty dollars versus what they spent and how much difference it makes in paperwork and employee hours to go through all of those expense reports or those receipts. You know, there are people who do eat. I don't eat as much either. I don't, and I rarely turn in. I'd be embarrassed to turn in my receipts for my egg McMuffin and my salad at lunch from McDonald's and things like that. But that's me. People, you know, other people eat like they're, like normal people. And so I'm certainly not going to set myself up as an example here. But I do see where people, where there is a policy that if we're going to spend fifty dollars a day, there are some people that will over, that will spend over that on their own expense. But there are others that have to bite the bullet because they're not going out with a big pocketbook full of money. And they may be eating with the same person that's eating a steak while they eat a hamburger. And that in itself is personal, I know, but it reflects on us too as a city that, that are, they're not, to me, they're not treated equally. Now, that's my personal opinion. And I had asked, and I still would like to see a study of other governments and what their requirements are.
I've got, I just did a quick call to five different locations.
Oh, wonderful.
And only one of those locations does not require a receipt. The other four do require receipts. None of them actually. None of them actually have a set amount. They just say reasonable expenses, which kind of scares me, but they do require receipts, and they reimburse per those receipts all reasonable expenses.
Right, and I don't have a problem with that either, but like I say, reasonable-
To answer your question right now, just, again, just a quick review. For this year so far, we're averaging about five dollars a day on meals because a lot of people don't turn them in.
Right.
So, if we go to just giving people X amount, it's, you know, it's going to have an impact on the budget. So, what I would project for this fiscal year is we'll have a lot less training this year, especially if it's not one hundred percent required, because the budget will just not be able to stand giving somebody fifty bucks a day to go eat off of.
Oh, that's not at all, Dick. You've got a thing here. I mean, don't put a derogatory term on something that's very important to these employees.
People automatically get fifty bucks for meals a day. They're just extra income, whether they spend it or not. I can't-
Well, I think their time is important in anything else when they have talked about this. Ultimately, when talking with Mr. Smith, he said the department heads are the ones who approve the travel or the schooling that these people are going to, and it comes out of the department's budgets. Is this correct?
Yes.
So, already, it's budgeted in there. So, if it's not used in that budget, what do you do with the money?
Well, just like anything else that we don't use in the budget, we- that's why we only spent, what, eighty-five percent of the budget this year because we watch every penny and every dime that's been spent.
Right. When you did your employee survey on satisfaction, was this issue- was this an issue- was this one of the questions about how- about going to classes and the reimbursement?
No, our employees, from our survey and a lot of what I hear from employees, they're very, very satisfied with the amount of training that we're giving them. We're allowing them not only to be better employees for the city, but also to improve their personal resume. And we have a lot of people who leave the city and go on to bigger and better jobs because of the training that we've afforded them. So, you know, we are- we're probably one of the leading governmental agencies when it comes to training and having our employees trained and spending them to train.
Right, and you and I talked about that, you know, when we had a pre-conversation about this, if everybody wants to know.
And I'm very adamant about having our employees well-trained because not only do they serve the citizens better, but they decrease our liability by having all the training that they can get. But I think there has to be a balance there of, you know, what training is affordable and, you know-
I did notice here that they are allowed to get an advance on their expenses. All requests for travel advances must be approved by the employee's respective department director. So, they do have an opportunity to get an advance. So, what do you determine it on?
We do not give them- not a monetary advance. All training is approved by the department director and by me in advance of them attending training. Any out-of-town travel-
So, that has nothing to do with money?
Has nothing to do with it.
So, you do not-
The registration's paid ahead of time, their hotel's paid ahead of time. We reimburse them for their meals upon a receipt.
They usually drive the company vehicle or city vehicle to get there, so the gas isn't an issue.
Every opportunity we possibly can, we have a city vehicle, and we use city gas or give them a credit card for use for gas.
Is there any reason why they need to go out of this area for training?
In some cases, yes, ma'am.
All right, what are those cases?
Oh, I mean, they're-
Water classes?
They're numerous. I mean, a lot of classes are in Athens, some in Jamaica.
Okay, out of state, out of state, not necessarily in state.
Rarely, rarely is out of state. There may be like K-9 training for police officers, maybe out of state. It's very, very rare for out-of-state training.
GFOA is national. It's in Chicago. This year, it was in Texas. Next year, it might be in Maryland or some other states.
But a lot of that is not- a lot of that's not mandated training. It's very rare for somebody to have to go out of state for mandated training. Most of the time, you can get your required hours in state.
Right. Well, I- the- like I say, there were a few employees that questioned this, and they asked if I would bring it up, and I told them I'd be happy to bring it up because I think it's good for discussion for us to discuss travel since we are doing this travel.
And it is, and of course, the commission has a separate travel and training policy from the employees, and that policy came about before my time and just-
And that was the one that I asked you to look at.
Yeah, just what I heard was-
And I want to make a comment about that.
Yeah, well, I don't know where that policy came from, what figures came out of it, why it's separate from the employees. That's something that predates me, so.
And like I said, I still- I take issue on that, you know, and I come in with Mr. Mar, and he don't take money for- he don't- for food. But the issue I have from that standpoint is, during the process of us coming up with this new travel policy, my understanding was that the only two set conferences that we would go to were- that would be paid automatically. It was- there was a formula how it would be paid by the city and reimbursed. Anything other than that, every travel has to come before this board and be voted on. Every time I've ever gone anywhere other than these two conferences, I had to put in a request, and it come before this board and be voted on. I- and like I said, I've never said anything, but I take issue to anybody else automatically being paid to go to a conference that does not come before this board. And don't get me wrong, I don't have a problem with it, and I would probably vote every time, but I feel like if there's one rule for one person, that everybody else should abide by the same rule.
Yes, ma'am, but you're looking at me, and I don't- I don't set the rules for you.
I'm not, no, I'm not looking at you.
Okay.
This is addressed to the whole board.
Okay.
I feel that if it's one rule for one commissioner, then every commissioner should be- should go the same way. Like I said, every time I've ever had to go anywhere for training, it always had to come before this board and have a vote on it. So, I don't feel like any other commissioner should just automatically go to training anywhere or conferences and be reimbursed or have expenses paid without coming before this- before this board.
I think that's a good point. I also think there's a bigger issue that gives me heartburn, and I'm trying to do this in generic terms, no personalities involved. But we have one or more commissioners that go to Mayor's Day and the convention in Savannah, spend four to five nights in a hotel, depending. They might take a course, but I never see them at any of the commission- any of the committee meetings, the workshops, or anything where the rest of us are there going to these meetings and workshops and trying to get the money worth. It's become a paid vacation for some who do not attend the GMA functions, and I think that's unethical that you go on a paid vacation and don't take advantage of GMA and go to the meetings, and that's being done, and I think that's wrong.
I can agree with you because I have the same issue. When I'm in Savannah for two, three, four days, I've never seen you. I don't run into Doug. But my issue with that is this, with what you're saying is, first of all, why are you monitoring where another commissioner is?
I'm not, but I just don't ever see them. I don't believe they go.
Because you don't- you don't go where?
At the committee meetings and workshops, which are all held right there in one area, and you see folks, and I see some of these commissioners regularly, some I never see.
Okay.
So, if it's not happening, fine.
Once again, my issue with that is, why are you monitoring or following up on where another commissioner go? We are seven elected commissioners-
I agree with that.
-elected by our district. And if there is an issue with how a commissioner is handling the business, that's between him and his constituents. As far as I'm concerned, nobody here is the boss of anybody else. It is not Kenny's responsibility to run up behind us. And if it's an issue with a commissioner not handling his responsibility, that's between him and his constituents. Now, I take issue with you making yourself the boss of us.
I'm not bossing, I'm just saying I think they have to look in the mirror.
So, if you still be running around trying to figure out where we are, what you doing?
I'm not running around trying to figure out anything.
Should we get in a room together? I got it.
I'm thinking we go to the-
What's mandatory- what's mandatory on these conferences is a class training. If you check transcripts to see whether a person is in training. No one in the package did it tell me that I have to attend every meeting that you or that Kenny went to or to every event.
I've never said that either. I'm saying I believe we have one or more who go to none. If that's not true, that's great.
Okay. When you said one or more, exactly who is it that you're talking about?
I'm not. I don't think we need to get first names. I think they have to look in the mirror and see if they're giving the taxpayer their money.
Well, like I said, each commissioner is elected by a district, and if there's a problem with that commissioner not taking care of his responsibility or whatever, then that's between him and his constituents.
It should be, yes.
It's not for another commissioner to try to father or boss another grown person around to make them responsible for their- whatever it is he did.
We're responsible for taxpayer money.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything concerning this matter, I just wanted to listen. But Mr. Mar, when you just said that you wasn't getting into personalities when in fact you did, I take issue to that.
I'm missing a name.
Because you came to me on Commissioner Evans, about Commissioner Evans. And if that's not a personality, I don't know what it is.
Well, you brought it up in public, I didn't.
Well, I mean, you brought it up in public, and I'm part of it, but so, I don't think that was- I don't think that's- for you to make that statement, you should- I don't think you should have made that statement what you just made.
I'll say it then, and you brought it. I don't- I never see a rule in anything with these-
Excuse me, Mr. Mar, but if you got a problem with me, you need to be a man and step to the plate, talk to me, you know, run around talking to other people. Because it's just like Mr. Ward just said, you know, I mean, you're not going to be in Savannah holding hands, we're not going to be sharing the same room. We don't have to kick it like that. You don't have to kick it like that.
Okay. Have we discussed travel policy? And we understand our responsibilities there. When we go, we- we are the keepers of our own selves, and apparently, the state's going to require us to be keepers of our own selves, so we need to do that. The next thing, and this is- this has come to me because the question has come to me, and flyers and newsletters that are printed by the city. Now, I had to go to Drew Wayland and ask him about one of Shaheer's newsletters, and I call Shaheer, so Shaheer knows this, and because he had some- he had listed the apartments in his district. And the main thing that Mr. Wayland wanted to know was, was it paid advertisement and that the city had printed the flyer? It was not paid, and Shaheer told me it was not paid. It was courtesy to his district. He is keeping his district informed. I went to Mr. Smith, and I asked, why not flyers? I have had flyers printed and put out for an issue. Mr. Mole has- when we've had an airport issue, has run flyers for the city for me to distribute to the constituents in the fourth district. And Mr. Smith told me that the city will do what it needs to do to help us as long as it's not considered monetary. Is this correct?
Well, if it's not campaign-related or doesn't have private ads or whatever on there. Yeah, I mean, that's what we're for, that's what you're for. So, any information you need to get out to your district, both the staff's here to serve you and the equipment's here to serve you, as long as it's not campaign-related or some type of private advertisement.
Right, and along the lines of what Ms. Ward said earlier, I'm an honorary mayor, I am- I have no more power than anybody else on this podium. I sign documents and preside, and where the law says that the chief elected official or the mayor, whatever, the commission chair will attend meetings. I contended that this flyer should have been- Shaheer should have been called by the commissioner that was offended by this instead of having to involve Kenny and Drew and looking up precedents to see whether somebody had broken an ethical law. So, I clarified that policy. The city will run newsletters and flyers as long as it's- there's no monetary reimbursement from an advertiser in it. And we can- we can send information to our district, we can represent our district that makes the city a better city all along. And I wanted a confirmation of this from Mr. Smith so that any of us that wanted to run a flyer or a newsletter would know that we were doing right, that we were not breaking any laws or any ethical laws or anything else.
Yes, ma'am, and you can't- it's not necessarily that ads are paid for or not paid for, but you can't advertise basically at all. I mean, you can't give free advertisement, neither can you have paid advertisement. You can give information, but you can't advertise a particular business either free or paid.
Okay. Now, does anyone have a problem? Do they understand?
I mean, you could welcome- you could welcome a new business, but you can't, you know, advertise shop at Piggly Wiggly or whatever.
Right.
Either free or paid.
Right, and the reason I brought this up, and I've- because I've got the role of the city manager's office as it relates to the commission, and Kenny will, I'm sure, expound on this. But it's like, if we have problems with one commissioner, we question what they have done, it's not Kenny's role to have to run interference to commissioners. He- his job is to run the city and to help us, and he exists because we employ him. But if we have a problem with any item that another commissioner's doing, it's not Kenny's role to have to run the interference for that because he is our employee, and he's Doug's employee, he's Dick's, he's Shaheer's, and when- that almost is like you try to conquer and divide, and we do not need to do that. We have operated so well as a board this year that we need to continue to be able to operate that way and know that we each are responsible for ourselves. And therefore, if I do something and someone has a problem with it, they need to call me and let me explain what I've done. And if they still think that that's unethical, then we'll go to Drew and see what he has to say because he is our ultimate god there as far as whether we abide by all ethics.
Hell, I'm a little promoted.
All right. Kenny, would you like-
I want to say one thing-
Okay, yes.
Since this letter was directly talking about me, this newsletter. Now, I can take the little sucker punches, light sucker punches coming at me. I can take those. But I've been doggone, if I'm going to stand for one, anybody, to try to stand between me and my constituents, to try to close the door, I've been doggone if I would take that. And if you all think that I'm light now, if that ever happened again, you're going to see Shaheer, you're going to see the real Shaheer. And I would not take that. And I'm- and I am ticked off- say ticked off, that is too light, and I would not stand for that. If someone had came to me and asked me, I would have told them that I have done newsletters for churches, both profit and nonprofit, for over five years. I've never had a problem. And if anybody have a problem with my intelligence, I tell you, I would talk to you about any subject you want to talk to after this meeting, including math and science, and I'll let you pick the subject because if I pick it, you couldn't stand it. So, if you got a problem with me, please come to me after this meeting, and we'll talk about it, and I'll let you pick the subject. But don't go behind my back when you haven't came to me. If I have a problem with anybody, I'm man enough to come to you and say I got a problem with it, ethical, moral, or what, I would come to you and let you know. But don't go behind my back. I'm working- I'm trying to open the door for communication with my constituents, and I would not allow anybody to step in my way of doing that.
Right, and I can appreciate that. We all work hard to represent our districts, and it isn't up to someone else to try to undermine or to question without coming to another commissioner. So, I think we have that resolved. We have the fact that we are allowed to do newspapers and flyers as long as we're not financially promoting a business, and-
And to make the distinction between a newsletter or flyer that's being paid for at city expense-
Right.
-from a campaign-
Exactly.
...document, which comes out of your campaign funds or contributions or your own pocket.
Right.
But that's where the real distinction lies.
I understand that, and it usually has something to do with city business when you have somebody with a newsletter.
I would say, too, if you're going to have a- something like a newsletter, if you're going to put it out, put it out on a regular basis, once a quarter, deal with events. I mean, right now, the city has probably one of the best sources is the new email notice that comes out at least once a week or so, I think, now, once a month. And y'all could all put in stuff that I suggested to Kenny the other day, maybe what you need is to expand that a little bit and have something, you know, by district, and each of you have something if it relates to city activities within your district added to that electronic newsletter. I don't-
Well, I think I know the best way to reach my constituents.
Right.
I'm not depending on nobody else to tell me the best way.
And as long as it's part of the city that you're promoting-
And I think I understand which way, and if I need you to help me, trust me, I will come to you.
Well, I'm sure you will. I'm not- I don't speak that, but I'm-
And I know the best way to reach my constituents. I don't need anybody else to tell me that I've been living in my community, in my district for over forty years. I don't need anybody to tell me which the best way- I don't need anybody to tell me which is the best way to reach my constituents.
No, and nobody disagrees with that, but if you're reaching your constituents for your own future political gain, then that's a campaign deal, you know?
Delegation, I, I know the difference between a campaign...
Well, good, I, I hope so.
I know the difference.
Yeah.
And like I say, if anybody here questioning my intelligence, I'd be glad to speak with them after the meeting over and I talk with them in a subject they wanna talk about.
Once we was talking about for campaign, like I can't put out a newsletter, the city can't print a newsletter for me because I'm up for reelection and it might be misinterpreted as I'm using city facilities to campaign. And that goes back to this, uh, Georgia...
A Georgia meeting could be considered, it could be caught, I mean...
Absolutely, and we have those all the time. And we, but, but we, and we have blessed a lot of things and, uh, and we should continue to do them. They are informational meetings, it's not necessarily a campaign deal. When you have, uh, when the candidates go for a, a forum or something like that, everything, you know, that particularly is campaign. But the, what we're getting at here is, uh, material that we're asking the city to print, to use the city facilities to print these things, and we know the difference. Like I won't ask you to print a flyer for me this year cause I'm up for reelection. And I will, I will distribute that, if I do that, I'll do that with my own paper at home, et cetera, and all that. That's the main thing. The, the bottom line here is, if we have a question with something that one of our, each of us has put out, we need to, uh, not go behind backs and ask people that don't know because then they've gotta turn around and ask somebody else. That's, that's really kinda childish.
One more thing I would like to add, I worked in radio for over fourteen years, including WHIE here in Griffin, both as a salesman and as an announcer. And I also worked on the Russ Spangler, I forget the call letters of Stacy here. And it's more, uh, a risk in radio than it would ever be in a newsletter and a, and a flyer.
Right, and, and Shaheer, and this was not, the only reason that I mentioned you was because, you know, I called you and because I got the question.
I have no problem with what you did, I, I have no...
Thank you, well, I appreciate that, cause I was not trying to pinpoint you or anything like that. I know that what you're trying to do is to just serve your district. And his district probably doesn't have email, Drew.
Oh, I understand.
You know, and so therefore the printed word is the best word, uh, for, for some of our districts.
That's true.
Alright, Kenny, would you like to add anything to what I said?
I just wanna reiterate that, that myself, Judy, Alicia, we all work for you, as does all of our employees, but we're here to assist you in whatever way. Keep in mind that if you're not, like Mr. Bay, I don't wanna take time to do a newsletter, we do have our webpage that we get information out. We have a newsletter that's both, uh, digital and that we print out, that's citywide, that we're, uh, certainly welcome to put anything related to, to your district in there. Uh, we have email blast, communication is one of the things that, that we work on every day to get information out to our citizens. So, uh, we're certainly open to that, but, uh...
But if anything's a political position that targets only a certain, there's a question, I mean, if they have this airport, Jo-Adford, this is the flyer that strictly goes to airport supporters to rally things and not to, uh, group back, and there's a gray line in regards to what you, on behalf of a commissioner or not.
You have to be careful not...
If you're not a Republican Party, Cynthia's gonna be offended.
Well, you wouldn't do that, you wouldn't, no, 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 let me tell you what, Robert's...
I don't know what the letter was about, the flyer, but there's...
The flyers were about a public meeting that concerned the residents around the airport when, and this was several years ago when Robert came. And it was a meeting strictly for those people that had asked for one. And so therefore we held it, held it right here in City Hall, so...
But if it went to everybody, it's one thing, but if it was selective, just this certain group of people that you know are pro-airport?
It was, uh, no, 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 it wasn't, it was, it didn't have anything to do with pro or against, it had to do with information.
Keep, keep in mind that anything we do or any questions that we raise, whether it's a question like that or because we want a receipt for a meal, all we're trying to do is protect you from some basis that we may know of already happened somewhere else or, or any question that we raise is try to keep you and the city in the best light possible. We're, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to do is just make sure everything is above board and to protect you.
Right, and, you know, and most people assume that everything we do is political, but it isn't, it's in service to the community. And, uh, and the thing that I asked Mr. Smith was, uh, and I didn't know until yesterday that we actually have a commission office here that we can invite people down here to, for a meeting. Most people wanna know where your office is at City Hall. And, uh, now I would have, and I, I expressed this yesterday, if I'm meeting someone down here, I'm not very comfortable being down here in this room by myself with someone who may be antagonistic. And so Kenny said that we could always come upstairs and meet in the, uh, the, the conference room there in upstairs. Uh, the, we have keys to this building, we, it is our building and we have the right to set appointments for anybody that has a problem that we need to meet. We have a, we need an office to meet the, the public with when they have a problem. Uh, especially people out of town that are coming in, they wanna meet you at City Hall, they don't wanna necessarily meet you at your home. I consider my home my office because that's where I conduct most of my business. However, I've had to meet, I, if I'm uncertain about it, someone coming and wanting to see me, and especially if they have got a serious problem with the city, I'm gonna have that meeting here. And I'm gonna have it where I've got city employees around in case I need to yell help. Uh, I, I, I told them, I work for Congressman Newt Gingrich in the bottom of the post office, the Griffin Post Office. The Social Security Office was there, as was the Foreign Bureau. I had a one-woman office and when people got mad at the federal government or Newt, I was in for a tough time. And so they put a panic button in by my desk so that if someone really got outrageous and threatened Newt through me, I could push that panic button and I'd have all these people coming to my aid. You don't have that in this buil- in this room if we meet with constituents in that ru- that, uh, room over there. So I think that we sometimes may be in danger unless we know the person. If we feel that we are, we need to meet upstairs on the third floor.
That was, that's more for, before a city commission meeting or...
Is it?
Or meeting in terms of if someone went to meet you?
Right.
Or just the minute before meeting, whatever.
You can use my office, I have a panic button.
You do? Yeah, Ha- Harry's objected to mine in the bedroom.
I, I have one other, uh, thing, I had, Kenny previously asked you and Miles about maybe coming up with, uh, some numbers, uh, that if we've, uh, had the, um, opportunity to offer the retirees opt-out of our insurance? And to, you know, to find their own insurance.